I'm sure things like that, you entered six.
The first few people say their piece.
Seven.
The rest of the country is about.
They read your.
In different words, so we know, we get you, we hear you. Please go now.
Yeah.
Well, it's happy and.
Yeah.
The board met in closed session. Item number one, update given, and confidential minutes were approved. We'll open the regular session. Would you please stand and join us to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, our public item, public matters not on the agenda, these are discussion items only. Any matter that requires action may be referred to staff or committee for a recommendation and possible action at a subsequent board meeting. Please note there's a three-minute limit per person, and would you would sign when you come to the podium?
Mr. Christensen. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Christensen from Sutter Creek, and I had a couple of items I wanted to mention. One is that I imagine most of you are friends or know Congressman Tom McClintock, and I would like you to urge him to stand with our allies in Ukraine. Yesterday marked the anniversary of when Russia invaded Ukraine, and I don't want to see our country turn its back on one of our allies and betray what we've been doing for them. We've been giving them money to buy weapons, guns, planes. That money is then spent here in America to buy those equipment and keeps our economy strong. If we do not continue to support Ukraine, they will go to countries like France and Germany, and the money that they receive, they will spend back into those countries helping their economy instead of us. I'd also like you to talk to Congressman McClintock about the budget bill that is before the House of Representatives currently. And it would make that budget bill would make cuts into Medicare, which is used by your constituents and his constituents. And so people need that help, and so I would urge you to talk to him and ask him to vote no on the bill as it is presented. By voting no, it would give him an opportunity to negotiate with Mike Johnson to try to change that bill into something that would be more helpful to his constituents. And the last thing I wanted to mention has to do with all of the people being laid off from government employees to be able to do things here in the county to help those people who have lost their jobs. I know in the past, the Republican Party has always been in favor of lowering the unemployment rates, and what Trump is doing is increasing the unemployment rates by letting all those people... people go, and it's a hardship on those people. So I would like you, as people who know Congressman McClintock, to talk to him and urge him to continue our country's support of Ukraine, to continue to support people on Medicare, and to support government employees. So there's talk about corruption and money being spent unwisely, and I would suggest that if that's being done in the government at the federal level, I'd also suggest you might want to look at the county and do some investigating here as far as any type of waste or corruption. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Board. My name is Mike Jones from Sutter Creek. Similar to Mr. Christensen, I have some points to raise about funding. Like many of my fellow Amador County residents, I'm here seeking your help to maintain the funding from the federal government for so many important programs and nonprofits. I have a list that I'll hand out to you. Is it appropriate now or later? Okay. Hello, Mr. Crew.
Good morning. You can just give them to one end, and we'll pass it now.
Okay. This is just a list of various programs, nonprofits, that may be threatened by the budget cuts from the Musk-Trump group. Or should I say cabal? I really implore you to fight for your constituents, to fight for many of these important programs and nonprofits that particularly help our most vulnerable populations: elderly, low income, those who are ill-earned firm, children, are all at risk with the budget cuts that may affect these programs: food programs, health support, programs in our schools, and more. It really covers a whole gamut of support for our population. As the major political body in Amador County, I really implore you to work with Congressman McClintock, as Mr. Christensen mentioned, to really help keep the funding coming to this county, that these important programs continue to be funded so we can continue to support our population, your constituents, by fellow citizens and residents. Thank you
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Gail Sweet. I live in Jackson with my husband Keith. We moved here in 1993, bought a bed and breakfast inn, and because it wasn't making a whole lot of money, I was working as a nurse. I've been a nurse for a really long time. I was able to work-- the list that Mike Jones just passed out was made, I think, primarily by Catherine Ebbett, and so she's helped us to remember as many of the agencies that are helped by our federal and tax dollars. I've worked for many of those, and I volunteered for many of those, so I just wanted to tell you a few of those things. Because the bed and breakfast wasn't making a whole lot of money, I worked as a nurse, first for Amador Home Health, and that's where I got to really learn this county, by going out to, you know, the two miles off from Highway 88 to see a patient or two out that way and watching the deer and all of that. So I appreciate this county. I love this county, and I know that's a really important agency because I've had to use it myself. When I had back surgery, I had physical therapy at my home. I was able to get meals from the senior center so that I didn't have to go grocery shopping or fix meals when my husband was out doing other volunteer kinds of things as well. After I worked for home health, I went to work for hospice. My mother had passed away, and she had hospice. We had hospice for her, and so I got to be a hospice nurse, and I got to see that when I had worked in a newborn nursery or in delivery as a nurse, I got to see little souls come in, and I got to see the souls go out, and it's a very important agency. The last place I worked was Public Health, and I saw the very important part of that as well, and after I left Public Health, my husband and I both volunteered with the COVID epidemic and got people the shots that they needed. So I'm very up close and personal with those agencies, and I really urge you to, you know, to be our advocates for not slashing all of those budget items that they're talking about every single day from Musk and President Trump. And lastly, do I have one more minute? Yesterday, I was at the meeting that we had with a staff member of Representative McClintock, and we had about 100 people that showed up, which was really impressive, and I did get up to speak about one of the items that's up for a vote this week, and it's the SAVE Act, which is HR22, and it has to do with voting. It's really a voter-suppressant bill, and it's designed to block voters despite no real evidence of any widespread fraud. Representative Tom McClintock co-sponsored that bill, and I would urge you to, if you use your power, to help him realize that that should be a no vote because we have really good, you know, we have really good control here in our county. We really appreciate voter-vote-in ballots, because we have a lot of elderly people that can't get down to vote, and one of the things that was really upsetting to me is that in this bill, there has to be two items of ID when you vote, and one should be a birth certificate or a passport or some item like that. And it talks about the fact that women who have their name on a birth certificate may very well be different because of their marriage license, and I've used the name Sweet for 61 years now, and it's not Zichterman anymore, so that would be a problem. Anyway, I just wanted to add that little item, but thank you for your attention. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Any Zoomers?
Not at this time.
All right. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
One thing I would like to say. The list here has a lot of worthy causes, but we have a problem in our country. It's like, right now, the county's looking at our budget, and we have a hole, so we're trying to figure out how we can make our income meet our expenses. As a nation, we haven't done that in a long, long time. Our national debt's about 35 trillion right now. We have a problem in our country. It's a big problem. My question is, at some point, somebody says, "We'll no longer take your debt." What are we going to do as a nation? You look at the dollar. I mean, I remember as a kid, five cents would buy you something. Nowadays, I mean, five cents is nothing. A dollar's nothing. I used to keep 20 bucks or hideaway money in my pickup. You know, now I got 100 bucks, and if 20 bucks may not get me home. If you forget your wallet, you run out of money, whatever, lose your wallet. But, and I was talking to somebody, they were telling me about, like, the fuel reduction program around the county, they're having problems with paying their contractors. So I get there's some real shakeups going on, there's some real issues need to be looked at, but I think as far as a nation, we need to look at how much money you're spending and where. And I know the county, we're going to have some cuts to county here to make our budget come up this year, probably some we're not going to be happy about making. I think as far as a nation, you can't keep-- at some point, the national debt can eat the income coming in. And when I was a kid, we borrowed, my dad borrowed some money. There came a point in time where, and we were young, so we couldn't make much money, just what my dad made. Cattle prices are bad, it was bad times. Every dollar we made went to service that debt, and that was whatever we could beg, borrow, scrape, you know, come up with, went to pay the debt on our ranch. We weren't making any money. We couldn't even really pay the debt, just the interest alone. But just something, I hear what you said, understand it, I agree with it, but we've got a problem in our country. It's called a debt load, and how do you address it?
I would suggest, too, that you look at the state cuts. They've been cutting stuff right and left very quietly, not hearing about it. In at least one of our organizations, they got cut 75% of their grants to kids and some other stuff, but our county got ours, but we were one of four that did. 75% did not because they're cutting stuff right now, and nobody's talking about it. The news is all about our president and the federal government, but I would definitely keep a really close eye on the state stuff because they can't print money. That's their problem. They're backed against the wall, just a heads-up. So they're definitely making cuts, but just keep your eyes open and look for that.
Chairman, we do have a hand raised.
Oh, yes. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Ebbett, when you're ready.
Hi, this is Catherine Ebbett. I'm zooming in from home because we're having some fuel reduction work done here today. I just want to urge all of you to maybe set aside your partisan political views and think about the well-being of the residents of Amador County. I mean, our county is heavily dependent on federal funds. I know that your own budget for this year is 59% intergovernmental transfers. A good chunk of that is federal money. I don't know how much of it is federal pass-through money that comes from the state. And if you look at the current budget proposals in the Congress, they will increase the federal deficit. They will not chew away at the debt. I'm gathering data right now on the county, and it is really astonishing how much income comes to county residents from Social Security, and that is Social Security for all forms. Best I can tell, that is $22 million a month coming into our economy from Social Security. And in order to make the budget cuts that Musk and Trump are proposing, there will have to be cuts to entitlement programs. That includes Medicare, which is going to affect the hospital, it's going to affect local medical providers, it will affect home health, it'll affect hospice of Amador, it'll include Social Security, it will include food stamps, and the last number on food stamp recipients I could find in the county this morning was out of date. It was at the end of 2023, but there were 3,700 people in this county who depended on food stamps. So our county and its residents are highly dependent on federal funding, and we need you, as our elected representatives, to stand up and speak for us with our federal representatives because frankly, they do not listen to many of us, but we think that they will listen to you. So I would just entreat you to stand up for your citizens, put aside your personal politics, and do what is best for our county. Thank you.
You know, one thing I'd like to say, I don't know about the other four board members, I think I could probably speak for them. The board members I've worked with, we don't run it as a personal political machine. We try to do what's best to people's county who we represent, Catherine, so I don't kind of like you throwing partisan politics at us. I don't think that's fair. It's not correct here. I don't believe it's correct with the rest of supervisors. This is our county. We work with people that represent a lot of the state here because, or came here because we like Amador County. But if you look at the national debt, though, I mean, it's, so I get where they're coming from. It'd be nice if they could get it down even more, but let's start off, 2010, 2010, 13 trillion. 2015, 18 trillion. 2020, oh my, 26 trillion. So from 2020 to 2024, the national debt went from 26 trillion to 35 trillion. Hey, Houston, we got a problem. The rocket's running out of fuel, and I mean, there's no, I don't like saying it, but I don't see a pretty picture unless you come up with some other way to print some kind of new money, or people will just, at some point, I mean, you look right now, you've got the BRICS. What's that? Brazil, Russia, India, China, and Spain, I believe, and China's trying to get their currency. If you look what happens in a nation when they lose basically, as far as a term for it's like a world-deserved currency. England had it, I think Spain had it, different countries had it, and they've lost it. And if we keep spending beyond their means, we're going to lose that. I think we'll probably end up losing that designation, and that means the dollar won't buy much at all in world trade. What's the price of gold? 3,000 bucks an ounce? It wasn't very long, it was 500. So all I'm saying, I understand your concern. I have the same concern. It's, there's going to be some pain. Yeah, so just wanted to put that on the table. Food for thought.
All right. Yes.
My name is Lottie Tone. I'm from Sutter Creek. I wasn't prepared to speak. I'm a little shaky in the voice, but this is in response to you, Brian. The federal workforce makes up 4% of our national budget, so doing away with this portion of our budget is not about helping our national debt. It's about dismantling our democracy. Thank you.
Come ahead, sir.
Good morning. Mary Gladen. I'm a resident in Amador County. I have a couple of problems here, and I'm bringing it to the board first before I take it to the specific offices. But the projects that were done up at Hazard Tree Removal Projects that were done up at Silver Lake and Bear River last year, I want to get a full-blown audit of payroll and the whole project in general. I'd like to see the numbers and make sure that we verified in fact that the company that did that work, which is Marius, wasn't sending paperwork in from jobs they're doing for PG&E or wherever they're working at and other places. I want to make sure that, here's the deal. Three licensed contractors that were legitimate bids were way up in the $700,000, $800,000 range and more. I was one of the three. It goes for $150,000. and more. I was one of the three. It goes for a hundred and fifty thousand, I think, or two hundred thou, three hundred thousand, whatever it was. Ridiculously low. You can't hardly even pay your employees the money it's cost to do the job. Secondly, requirements of the contract, it was a Forest Service connected with the county, so they're both married together on this. But, uh, the Forest Service and the county wrote a contract that they expected to be followed. It, it told you that you were going to take the trees around the cabins down, put them in log lengths, just like they're going to a sawmill. You're going to haul them all the way up by Iron Mountain. You're going to put them in decks specific to the species, cedar, fir, pine, all separated. Long logs by themselves, short logs by themselves, so that a mill or whoever wants to buy them could come by them. All I've seen is chunks, little chunks of wood everywhere. You know, the amount of money it costs just to move those logs up the hill is substantial, really substantial. It consists of several loaders, trucks, other things. I guess it's held to three minutes here, so I should go at warp speed here. Um,
You go a little longer. I don't think the chairman would mind.
Yeah. So everything about that, I'd like audited. I'd like to be, have access to it. And the truth is, I think that just about everything should be audited anymore to make sure that the funds that went to any specific thing in the county, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not just saying the county only, but everybody really should be looked at to make sure they didn't put three hundred thousand dollars into a project and out of that three hundred thousand, it cost them two hundred thousand to do, and the other hundred thousand disappeared. I think that that kind of stuff should be, we need, we need to audit things. We need to look at, including, including the sheriff's department, everything. Um, anyway, getting back to the job part itself, that job was put up for bid and you had to have a timber, a licensed tree remo, a tree, like a carb, a arborist license from the state of California, Board of Contracting. And, and that's really all it called for, you know. I came in with a, you can't work state law. You cannot have a contractor that doesn't have a general engineering license. You can't have them working on any state or county highway or in its right way. Well, I don't, I don't know why they've left that out of the bid. That needs to be part of the bid. It's the law. I believe California's overregulated, but, and we're in a big mess here, but, um, I, I really honestly think that the general engineering license, you guys probably don't realize that that's part of kind of work that you're asking to be done on your hazard tree removal projects. It's a, it's a must. State law. And, uh, so there's, I've got other things to say too, but it's not that really critical. Um, well, one of them is water lines that were broke up there on the cabins in that tract. Okay? I'd like to know which licensed contractor that's a contractor for doing water systems, underground water, came up there and did the job when the lines were broke. I'd like to know who purged the lines. If a line's broke, you're going to get dirt in it. You're going to get bacteria in it. It's going to go to all your cabins out there. So who went in there and made sure that they didn't have Giardia going down to everybody's cabin? These are things that are being missed, and this is why our costs are much higher than the guys coming in and doing underground, you know, just sliding by. And I just think that that needs to be looked at closer because I'm, everybody's asked me why I don't bid. So I went back up and bid those jobs. And I'm not just mad because I didn't get it, because I'm, I just missed the job with SPI the other day. It happens. But it needs to be people that have the right credentials, the right insurance, and they're running above-board business.
Well, I think they, Gary, they had the right insurance. The credentials, I believe, are correct. I think the state made some, I'm not, I'm not sure on this, but I believe they made some accommodations on the hazard tree removal. Um, I will say as far as what they bid on the job up there, I do a lot of hazard tree work. Um, I, I talked to our fellow that was handling, handling the contracting and like, I was like, are these people really going to, do they understand what they're getting into up there? Because their job is, I mean, their price is so incredibly low, um, I don't see how they can do it unless they want to keep a crew busy and basically probably lose money on the job. Um, because you're paying prevailing wage. That was, that was a hard job, a lot of big trees. So I did wonder how they're, how they're making ends meet up there. Another big company. I give this, it was shockingly low what they did.
Could I get information from you guys, reference to the fact that the state of California released liability to have a J, a license, general engineering contractor's license? I'd like to read that and, and, and make sure that that's in my head right. Um, the second thing is-
Like, we can, I think we can look into that, yeah.
Trees that were supposed to be cut at a certain length. Doesn't matter who the contractor is. You can come in there for five dollars or a million dollars. Those trees were supposed to be picked up, cut in certain lengths, and, and put in piles. That's how we did it. And it goes up into great big chunks of wood, looks like firewood, ten-foot-long pieces of firewood piled all over the place. Chips. Chips could be spread on the ground, but they're dumped in piles places. I, I just, there's, there's a whole lot of stuff that you, I don't want to bid any more jobs here, simply because I did the job based off of the criteria of the contract that I'm getting ready to sign. And then I come back and look at the job afterwards, and there's been so many changes to the contract. You know, I understand like Forest Service and one-eighty-ones and all that kind of stuff. I understand that well. They're going to make special provisions for special situations that they didn't account for. But you can't just walk up and say, we're arbitrarily going to forget bringing a log truck out here or a log, uh, log loaders out here or tractors or dozers or backhoes or excavators.
A lot of that work at Silver Lake is basically tree work, and a lot of it's going to break when it hits the ground. A lot of it, you have to take down to pieces because you can't just flat follow those trees. I mean, you're a logger, you know that.
I know that. I know that you'd have a tremendous amount. I've spent many hours up there.
I would think it should be, if it says-
All length logs.
If it says sorted, sorted by species, it should be sorted by species. Um, I, I hear what you're saying there, but I think probably the biggest thing is, I mean, I can see where you might want to audit. I'm just, make sure everything is done according to, according to, because when you're a prevailing wage job, which, what that is, um, the pay rate is very high. It's very expensive. Um, that's why I shocked with the bid, but I don't see why we couldn't ask for audit of their payroll. I mean, that's under DIR, I think that's something, you could probably even do that.
The contract had a provision for chunks being broke on the ground. What though you usually look like is not something that's been sawed on both ends. It's something that's got a broken end. So the chunks, I understand. We've worked a lot of salvage projects in the past.
If, if you could, Gary, would you, um, I guess we got here, would you mind sending us an email with some of those questions?
Sure. I'd, that'd give me a chance to actually put them all together.
Okay.
And, and, and so, uh, and that's about all I've really got to say based on that. But one thing I will tell you is, was the lady that just spoke, I understand what she's saying. But I want everybody to be advised and understand that those laws were written in September of twenty-twenty-four to do what they did today. That was a pre-existing agreement from the Forest Service. I was just with Randy Moore in Reno for, with seven people meeting about the whole different projects we're trying to accomplish and make changes out here. He was out there, we spent about an hour.
You said the laws. I don't under-
Pardon me?
You said the laws, the lady that spoke?
Well, I understand, I understand her feelings is what I said, and how she feels about the situation. But I would hope that she could understand that, that those decisions were made in September.
You're talking financial, you're talking financial decisions.
Yeah, they came across Randy Moore's desk in, uh, I think it was December for his first time to see. But those were things that had already been done congressionally, back east as far as Fire, Forest Service and things that they had to make cuts on.
Okay.
It's not, can't really be pushed. I, I think you could push blame in any direction you want right now, but, uh, it was a different, it was a different, uh, group of people in twenty-twenty-four. So.
All right. Well, thank you.
That's just for her edification.
All right. Thanks, Gary.
Mr. Chairman, we do have another comment via Zoom.
All right.
Uh, Ms. Olson-Jones, please go ahead when ready.
Thank you. Uh, yes, my name is Betty Olson-Jones, and I live in Sutter Creek. Uh, in response to Supervisor Anetto's concern about the federal debt, I just have one question. Trump's made it clear that he plans to make tax cuts for the rich and continue what he did in, in his prior administration. How is that going to affect the federal debt? What additional programs will need to be cut that affect our county to pay for these tax cuts? We know the money's not going to come from anywhere unless they keep raising the debt ceiling. But shouldn't we be demanding that our representative in Congress, Tom McClintock, oppose these cuts? Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
No response?
It's a very broad question. Um, it's something I can't really give you an answer right now, at least not a good answer. Um, there's a lot, there's a lot, the lot goes into making, making an omelet. That'd be my response. I mean, it's like, I know one thing, sometimes, sometimes if you become too punitive in businesses, businesses say, hey, we're out of here. We're leaving. Then you lose, then you lose your tax base, you lose your job base. Not saying you have to absolutely, um, give away the bank, but sometimes you see local jurisdictions, sometimes you, I don't kind of like it, but I see it happen. They'll say, they'll, they'll forego, um, property taxes, a lot of different income sources to bring a business into, into, into their jurisdiction. A lot of cities and towns, a lot of towns do it. I don't like it. It happens all the time. So probably similar would be my, when we once thought I'd have. Um, anyway, I'll leave it at that.
All right. Is anybody, everyone, I'll make sure everybody has a chance one time, Steve, before you come back. Anybody else? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to jump in here. We're getting into a lot of back-and-forth dialogue that's really not appropriate on matters not on the agenda. There's really not supposed to be discussion.
Any gap, yeah.
Just raising issues, and then the board can either decide to look into them or, um, really, we're getting too far into a back-and-forth about all these topics.
All right.
I'm part of the back-and-forth. Um, I think that, uh, again, the budget that I would like you to speak to, to Congressman McClintock about, uh, would raise the national debt by trillions of dollars. And that's, uh, even with laying off thousands of employees, the budget will still increase the national debt. And so I'm concerned about the national debt and, um, don't want to see his budget go forward as it stands and would like Congressman McClintock to, uh, vote against that bill as, as it now is stands. And then one more thing is that yesterday at the United Nations, the United States voted, uh, against a resolution that would have condemned Russia for invading Ukraine, along with the United States of America. Uh, other countries that voted no was Russia, China, Iran, North Korea, Hungary. When was the last time all those countries voted with us? Um, our country is having a problem. I don't want to see us starting to support what have been in the past, uh, our enemies. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, hearing none. We'll move on. Item three, oh no, we're, approval of today's agenda.
I'll move. Second.
All right. We had a motion by Supervisor Rapperson, second by Supervisor Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries five-zero. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move. Second.
All right. We had a motion by Supervisor Rappeto and a second by Supervisor Cornell. Well, he's talking over there.
That's my first one.
Oh, there you go. You did. All in favor of approval to consent as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries five-zero. Item three is the regular agenda. Three A is Meals on Wheels, presentation by Mr. Chris Kelton, Amador Senior Center Executive Director, relative to his program. Good morning.
Hi, good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Supervisors and Amador County staff. Nice to see you. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you what Meals on Wheels has accomplished in calendar year twenty-twenty-four. Before I jump into that, I just want to say it's my honor to have two of our board members here, Keith Sweet, uh, who sits on our board, and Patty Noblock, who sits on our board as well. I'm very grateful for them and their wisdom and how they help to, uh, direct and shape our programs. So I wanted to recognize them before we get started. So Meals on Wheels, uh, for the two Supervisors who are new, just a little background information. This is a program in which, uh, older adults receive a home-delivered meal. We deliver these meals every single day in Amador County. They're a hot, prepared meal, fresh, every day. And they meet certain nutritional requirements that are set forward by the program through, uh, California Department of Aging. And a bulk of our funding comes from the California Department of Aging down through, uh, Area Twelve Agency on Aging. Uh, part of our funding also comes from Amador County, and that's why I'm before you to sort of report on what we've accomplished with the, uh, money that the county provides as well. So older adults receive this meal on a daily basis. None of them are refused service for their inability to pay or contribute money. We do request a five-dollar participant contribution per meal, which arguably is pretty, um, reasonable considering, uh, the state of things as far as costs and, uh, food and, uh, fuel costs. The center does face quite significant increases over the last few years, uh, through inflationary issues, as I've reported before. We continue to see those. It doesn't take much observation, but to drive by your local gas station to see, uh, the per-gallon cost, as we do home-delivered every single day, the costs are, are pretty significant to, to provide that level of service to older adults. But we continue to be committed to it, uh, because we feel that it provides the best service not only to older adults with regard to their, uh, nutritional needs, but also a daily welfare check takes place in that interaction. And it's a social connection for homebound older adults who lack those relationships that you and I do just by the mere fact that we're here today interacting. They, they lack those interactions. And so many of our clients who are homebound and unable to, to get out into the community say to us as we deliver, and I have been in a vehicle myself doing deliveries, just to stay connected to the clients, they report when they see their driver that it's the highlight of their day. It's the best thing that happened to them that day is to have that interaction. Even as brief as it might be, just a hello, how are you doing? Are there any changes in, in your situation that we need to be aware of? And here's your meal, and, uh, hope you enjoy it, and, uh, we'll see you tomorrow. So that's the importance of the daily delivery. It's more than just the client experience. It's also making sure that that welfare check is there and that we are engaged in the life of these individuals on a daily basis. So what did we accomplish in the calendar year twenty-twenty-four? We accomplished quite a bit. As you can see, we delivered thirty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-seven hot meals every single day, five days a week, to older adults in Amador County. We had a volunteer engagement of eight-hundred-and-thirty-three hours. And if you take a minimum wage of sixteen dollars, which was the time in twenty-twenty-four, um, you, you come with, uh, with a value of thirteen thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars in value to the center, to the program that is directly contributed by members of the community. So we're very grateful for our volunteers. They helped to keep staffing costs down. You can see that, uh, accomplishing a program like this requires investment from the community. And so those who are perhaps listening to this presentation, if you're interested in being involved, it's so important to have that volunteer involvement because honestly, a sixteen-dollar value doesn't, per hour value doesn't, uh, really speak to the level of service that our volunteers give. Twenty dollars might be a little more reasonable, but for a figure, that's what we have. I also want to show you a couple of program highlights because not only do we do, uh, that daily interaction and the welfare check for older adults, but we also have a pet support program. So older adults can receive, um, food and supplies for their pets, and we'll bring that to their home with their daily delivery, should they request those items. And then we have very limited funding, but we do provide veterinary services to those on our program, which would, might include, um, boarding if an individual ends up hospitalized and doesn't have a place for that pet to go. And one of the reasons we have this program obviously is to encourage pet ownership because of, again, that social connection. It, it gives an older adult purpose in their lives to have an animal. And how many of us in this room would admit publicly that we talk to our animals, don't we? Yes, we do. Thank you Supervisor Brown for your courage.
Uh, mine talks back.
So when we provide that pet support, it's to provide that, that interaction for older adults in that sense of purpose and to, to sort of, uh, help them with their social, social isolation. Uh, new this year, launching in September, we have started a new program for medical transportation. Again, this is non-emergency medical transportation. The program requires two weeks' notice to our office, and a request would be put in with our program coordinator. with our program coordinator and then arrangements made for an individual who lacks transportation to get to medical appointments or renal care or any of those, those aspects of physical therapy. We've taken people to the pharmacy to get their medications. And it's only within Amador County, so we provide that service within the, the boundaries of Amador County and not outside of it. Unfortunately, we don't have the staffing, resourcing, or funding to do it outside the county, but at least we're here to provide that service, again, for our Meals on Wheels clients. And then finally, we provide a friendly visitors program, which are other older adults who volunteer time to be engaged at a deeper level than what our delivery drivers can do on a surface level. So those friendly visitors spend a little more significant time either calling or interacting at the individual's home, just to check in on them, make sure everything's going okay, to resource them further, to point them in the direction of other services and programs from other nonprofits in the community as well as county or governmental support as well. Fresh, just this month, we did a survey, it was through January, and we, we pulled the results together and I want to show you the results of that survey as it speaks to the economy and the demand on our programs. We asked the question amongst many, and some of the other questions I didn't put up here, but, but were related to food quality and client experience, which were all very highly rated. In fact, we only had one individual respond that the experience with the food was bad. We can't cater to everyone, but we feel like we do a pretty good job. And we asked the question, do you feel that the current economy is the top reason for using the program now more than you did in the, in the prior years? And you can see a significant level of response in the agree column. A lot of folks, I think, are feeling the pinch of the economy, the rising costs of food, energy, and fuel costs and that sort of thing. So you can see that this is a much needed program, you can see that it's an in-demand program and it's a program that continues to grow. And finally, I want to leave you with a little larger outlook on the programs and services we offer in the nutrition area. Not that this is directly funded by the county, again, the county contributes to the Meals on Wheels program, but in the final slide, I wanted to show you how we attempt to localize services for older adults with regard to nutrition programs. So these are older adults that can get out, they can travel, and so if we can bring that last slide up, I just want to show you how we localize those services. We have in-person congregate sites where individuals within the county can come and have lunch, again, for that social connection and the nutritional components, as well as engaging in a, in a low-cost meal as they face the, the inflationary costs of, of rising food prices. So just new this year, also, well, launched in 2024 in October, we put a congregate site in Plymouth on Mondays for the first time and we're very happy about that. We did have a site there before COVID and then it shut down and it was very difficult to get back up again, but it meets at the, the fairgrounds and so we're very grateful for them hosting us on Mondays and then on, in Pioneer on Tuesdays, Pine Grove on Wednesdays, Ione on Thursdays, and then of course Jackson Site is Monday through Friday. Which brings me to an invitation, particularly to our new county supervisors. Love to have you over at the center for lunch sometime, please send me an email, give me a call, I'd love to sit down with you, review with you our services in a broader way, so as you interact with constituents, you know what we offer and, and how you can direct people who come to you with need in the county, who want to be here to serve. And of course, those of you who've been on the Board of Supervisors for a while, who have enjoyed lunch with us, you can speak to how, how much it is a good product and we'd love to have you as well come and sit, I'm available anytime to dine with you and to answer any questions and help you with any of your needs. So that wraps up the presentation on Meals on Wheels, I'm happy to take questions.
I do recommend Rib Day.
If you can find parking. Yes, park here, walk over there. Yeah, we do, we do fill up the parking lot. Any other questions?
No, I just think you've been doing a very good job. So thank you.
Thanks Supervisor Odeno, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
Yeah, Mike Jones again, thank you, Mr. Calvin, for that great presentation. And I think this is a perfect example of a program that serves some of our, some of our most vulnerable residents, older folks who are housebound, that can use the food and the company. I know years ago in Asheville, North Carolina, however that exists still today, my parents lived there, my dad did Meals on Wheels, and he was in his late seventies, early eighties, so he wasn't, he was probably older than some of his clients, but he loved it, it really was a spark for him. So I think not only does it serve the residents that need it, but it also, I think, serves those who volunteer. So I think it's a wonderful program, whatever you can do to keep funding for it, and I know it's on the chopping block with the, the Trump-Musk cabal, and I think we have to fight that as hard as we can. Thank you.
Anyone else? These zoomers?
Not at this time.
All right, that was a presentation only. Thank you very much. Three B is discussion and possible action relative to a proposal from Supervisor Cornell to place a weight limit on county roads. Supervisor?
I'd like to preempt my, all my statements by saying I drove a commercial vehicle on our county roads and I enjoyed the convenience of them, but this rose out of a conversation with the California Transportation Commission, where it was explained to us that our small rural counties don't have the staff to keep up with the ever-changing, ever-growing expectations of what California expects out of us in order to fix our own roads. So I looked at our roads and they are failing and I just felt that if California felt that we as a rural community couldn't fix our roads, that we should put our heavy trucks on their roads because they are able to care for their roads. So I called our local DHP Commercial Officer, Officer Morse, and asked him for some statistics on some of our local roads and he's been gracious enough to join us today, so.
All right.
Thank you Supervisor Cornell. Chairman, Supervisors, Amador County, thank you for having me this morning and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Before we get started though, I would like to hand out, of course, if I can give you some information, some handouts that I made recently in regarding to some roads that I'm going to discuss this morning. For those of you that I haven't had the pleasure of meeting, I'm Brian Morse, I'm an officer with the California Highway Patrol, I've been an officer with our agency for over 22 years. The last 10 and a half years, I've been assigned to the Valley Division Commercial Vehicle Enforcement Unit. And my responsibility is to enforce the rules and regulations on our regulated commercial vehicles, our truck traffic, to ensure that the, the drivers driving these vehicles are qualified to operate the commercial motor vehicles, but they're also have the proper endorsements for the load or the combination of vehicles they're transporting at that time. Besides enforcement on our public roadways and our state routes and our highways, I also will set up what we call inspection lanes, whether I work at an inspection facility or whether I set up these inspection lanes in a safe location, some of our state routes. And I'll conduct commercial vehicle inspections. And when I'm inspecting these vehicles, I'm inspecting them to make sure that they are mechanically safe and sound to be on our roadways, that the loads are properly secured for the loading regulations. And again, as I said before, to make sure that the drivers of these commercial vehicles have the proper endorsement, whether it's the load that they're transporting, for example, hazmat, make sure they have their hazardous materials endorsements, or whether it's a combination, they have a double's combination endorsement. I was contacted recently, a few weeks ago, by Supervisor Cornell, and he brought up some concerns regarding some local roadways that are within his district and asked that I do some research on these roadways. So recently, last week, it was last Wednesday, it's February 19th, in the 14 hours between 8:00 and 9:00 AM, I was on routine patrol, I was in full uniform as you see me today and I was on patrol in my fully marked black and white CHP patrol truck. And before I go any further, my patrol truck has been calibrated, so the odometer as well as its speedometer is found to be accurate. I drove some of our local roadways, some of which I'm going to discuss in a moment. Some of these roadways I'll discuss, one of them specifically is not considered to be a truck route, there's a weight restriction, I'll speak to that. The other roadways I'm going to speak of currently are what we consider to be, and I'll put in quotes here, considered to be a truck route. So we'll start with Climax Road. Climax Road at this time, travel, Climax Road travels between Ridge Road and State Route 88. So again, I traveled this road last week, just wanted to get an idea of the, the width of the lanes, kind of how the roadway is laid out, I'm very familiar with the road. And all the roadways I'm going to speak of, I've patrolled these roads for over the last three years, so I'm, I'm very familiar with them. But to, excuse me, specifically last Wednesday when I traveled Climax Road, Climax Road, again, state travels between Ridge Road, the upper portion of Ridge Road and State Route 88. Currently, a commercial vehicle, a combination, as long as a truck, tractor and a trailer, does not exceed 65 feet, or as long as a truck, tractor and double's combination, doesn't exceed 75 feet, they can utilize Climax Road. The weight restriction, which is not necessarily a weight restriction placed, imposed, imposed on there by the county, but it's statewide, there's a weight limit of 80,000 pounds, and that's combined weight, that's truck, trailer, everything as it, as it sits going down the road. So as long as the, the truck and trailers don't exceed the length, as long as they don't exceed the weight, they are allowed to use Climax Road at this time. Climax Road, I just confirmed with our CHP bus officer this morning, that the Climax Road is also a bus route, so Climax Road shares a road with the commercial vehicles that is transporting our children to and from school at least five days a week. There's two lanes, there's an eastbound lane, there's a westbound lane, those lanes are separated by solid double yellow lines and the posted speed limit is 30 miles per hour. So if you travel Climax Road and you travel at the max speed limit based on roadway conditions, based on the, the surface of the roadway, and also the traffic conditions, good weather, it took me six minutes to travel a three-mile stretch of Climax Road at 30 miles per hour. And I also counted the amount of steering input, I wanted to get technical with this, how much steering input did I need to negotiate the road and actually stay within my lane? So as I was traveling eastbound on Climax Road, I also did the survey traveling westbound, it took me 32 separate turning movements to maintain and actually negotiate. Now, some of those are slight curves, other of those are actually tighter turns, but 32 different times you're going to be, be putting steering input. Just in the last three months, we've had three, excuse me, two separate traffic collisions in the last three months that I've been a part of the investigation, that were involved commercial vehicles. Specifically, three months ago, we had a truck in double's combination that was hauling a load of hay from Nevada down to Turlock, overturned on Climax Road near Peterson Ranch Road, right in the curve there. Thank goodness it was the only vehicle involved, there were no reported injuries, but unfortunately, when the vehicle overturned, it spills the load of hay onto the roadway. So now we have Climax Road that is blocked from not just commercial vehicles, but all traffic, blocked to local residents. So that tied up three separate CHP personnel for, in upwards of four hours, I was one of them, and also tied up multiple county employees as well as the resources that it took to bring their equipment out and the employees from the county that came out to clean that up. Just recently, two weeks ago, we had another traffic collision, overturned a truck and trailer combination that was hauling a load of bark and bagged mulch, and that was going eastbound on Climax Road, just east of Pioneer Drive, and it overturned, again, closing the roadway due to the fact that when you bring a, a large tow truck out, Climax is so tight that it, we had to take the entire roadway in order to upright that. That was in upwards of four hours, and again, there was three CHP personnel, there was multiple county personnel and equipment that was used. Climax Road, if, depending on where you measure the roadway, the, the lane width is nine to 10 feet wide. To put in perspective, an, an average lane width on a very large interstate or highway, for example Interstate 80, US 50, State Route 99, the, that, there's an average of a 12-foot wide lane, and I know we don't have any very large highway systems within our county, however, to put in perspective, you have a 12-foot lane on these major highways and Climax Road is a nine to 10-foot wide lane, depending on where you measure it. Now I'd like to talk about Ridge Road, specifically Upper Ridge Road, that travels between State Route 88 and the intersection with Climax Road. At, at this time, Ridge Road is not a truck route, there are black and white regulatory signs posted stating that there is a, a weight limit of 10 tons, there's also another sign on State Route 88, if you come westbound approaching Upper Ridge Road, says 10-ton weight limit on Ridge Road, trucks use Climax Road. So any commercial vehicle or commercial combination that exceeds 20,000 pounds is restricted from Upper Ridge Road. So I traveled Upper Ridge Road, it's approximately three miles long, the posted speed limit is 40 miles per hour. It took me approximately four minutes and 50 seconds to travel Upper Ridge Road and there's 23 separate turning movements. I traveled Upper Ridge Road in both directions, timed it, and just wanted to make sure I had my, my turning movements correct. Again, that was to negotiate Upper Ridge Road and stay within my lane. The other roadways I'd like to talk about is State Route 88. So State Route 88 is, is a truck route, as long as they meet the same requirements that are on Climax Road. State Route 88 from State Route 49, as long as they're not over 65 feet truck and trailer, truck and doubles can't exceed 75, they can utilize State Route 88 all the way into the state of Nevada. And those are the length restrictions, the weight is the same as 80,000 pounds. So I traveled State Route 88, I, I actually, when I went down to what I'll consider Lower Ridge Road, the intersection, I don't know if that's considered Sutter Creek or Martel right there, but on State Route 88, I traveled east on State Route 88 to where it transitions into southbound State Route 49 through Martel, dropping me down into Jackson on State Route 49, southbound, then made a left turn onto State Route 88 and continued eastbound from 49. To travel the distance on State Route 88 that is described, that's a distance of 11.5 miles, and it took me approximately 15 minutes and 30 seconds. So to stay on the main state routes that we have in our county currently, in, as opposed to not using Ridge Road and not using Climax Road, it would take you 15 minutes and 30 seconds, as long as you didn't exceed any of the maximum posted speed limits, again, that's weather permitting, that's also dependent upon the roadway conditions and traffic, but it's 11.5 miles. I'll back up, when I traveled the, another truck route that includes Climax Road and Ridge Road, I guess it'd be the lower portion of Ridge Road, that is a total of 10 miles and it took me approximately 14 minutes and 30 seconds. So the difference between the two truck routes that we have currently in this area is a, a mile and a half difference and about a minute difference between the two. That's the information I was asked by Supervisor Cornell to bring today, I just wanted to bring the facts. Is there any questions about anything that I spoke of?
I would suggest, I know it's not my district, but I own Michigan Bar Road, is, I don't know what it's rated, but there's a lot of trucks on there, a lot of accidents there too. And then I know Willow Creek Road, I'm not speaking to what you talked about, sorry, but the east side of Willow Creek Road, there's the plant there, and that's why everything else is pretty tough to negotiate, that would be another place to look at if we're in a larger conversation.
The only question I had was actually just a, what is the difference between trucks on, let's say, Highway 80 to 88? Is there, is there a difference there?
There is, I'm glad you asked. So Interstate 80 specifically, although we all understand it's not within our county, that's been designed to accommodate trucks, and by trucks, I mean truck and trailer combinations that exceed 65 feet, truck and double's combination that exceed 75 feet. For any of us that have traveled Interstate 80, we know that the, any of the turns are very, they're very smooth transition, there's no tight turns, the lanes on Interstate 80, depending on where you measure them, but it's going to be an average of 12 foot. So trucks have plenty of room within their lane, thus, as passenger vehicles also have plenty of room within our lane to be able to navigate around these trucks. And so Interstate 80 has been designed specifically as a truck route and it's considered part of the national network. We call, we call it an STA route, it stands for Surface Transportation Assistance Act. That would, the STA route came about in 1982, part of the Dwight D Eisenhower Act, and what that did was when they brought long trucks, way before my time as a highway patrol officer, but when they brought long trucks from other states, the issue they had when they entered the state of California was that these, California at that time had what we called the legal truck length, was a truck and trailer of 65 feet. So essentially what is allowable right now on Climax Road. And drivers that were interstate drivers coming from, that were long haul drivers out of state into the state of California, they dealt with an issue when they got to the state line, they weren't allowed necessarily to enter because our roadways were not designed to accommodate those trucks. And really what it boils down to is turning radius. So when you have a turning radius, and I'm, I'm going to continue to use Climax Road as an example, when you have a turning radius on a truck and trailer that legally can be there at this point, truck and trailer 65 feet, the turning radius, what we call rear wheel cheat, when that power unit, the truck tractor or that commercial vehicle is, is navigating or negotiating the curves of the roadway, the tighter the curve, by the time that trailer is done completing its turn, the off-tracking of the rear wheels on that trailer, if they're making a left-hand turn, are most likely going to be crossing over the double yellow lines and into the opposing lane of traffic. If they're making a right-hand turn, they're going to be, by the time that off-tracking is done and that turn is made, that trailer tires are most likely going to be off- that trailer tires are most likely going to be off onto the shoulder because of Climax Road specifically being so tight. Interstate eighty, however, due to the fact that the, the turns aren't as tight, you have wider lanes, it's designed as a truck route, and we get so much, it's a major artery for California, Interstate eighty is. So when we do have trucks that are over length specifically, that, which is not the topic I was going to talk about today, they do, that's okay, I'm glad you asked, they do have an alternative route, and it's a legal route. But that route is designed with, with just very gradual turns. And the, the off-ramps specifically that they intersect with, they're designed to accommodate those trucks when they either enter onto the freeway or exit off the freeway. Um, our roadways up here, anything from State Route forty-nine on State Route eighty-eight, everything east to Nevada state line is not designed to accommodate overlay trucks. So that's why on Climax Road I continue to talk specifically about the sixty-five feet and the seventy-five feet. Um, but with, with the roadway being as, as tight as it is, uh, also with the roadway having as many turns you have to, to negotiate, um, it, it can pose an issue. Um, it can pose definitely a safety issue to oncoming traffic, no matter whether it's another oncoming traffic commercial vehicle, or whether it's a passenger vehicle or, or a bus. Did that answer your question about Interstate eighty?
Oh, I, so you mentioned buses, so what's the, the rules there with passenger buses? We have those coming through? Like mostly they're tour buses, I think. You see them all over too, coming through?
So, again, as long as the, that specific tour bus, and to my knowledge, I don't know that there's a tour bus that's going to exceed sixty-five feet, but as long as that tour bus doesn't exceed a certain dimension and does not exceed eighty thousand pounds, potentially they could at this time use Climax Road. Again, Upper Ridge Road is restricted, as we already know. Um, when I look at State Route eighty-eight, I look at State Route forty-nine, I look at, again, this is an, it's an, an alternative, it's another option. The curves, the turns, the curvature of the roadway, um, they're more gradual. So it, I don't want to, I, I'm not a roadway engineer, so I can't say they were designed to accommodate the trucks. However, they are more accommodating to our commercial, uh, truck traffic than currently what Climax Road and Ridge Road.
Then so with the accidents, I'm sure there's more than two, we, a lot of those, you know, there's plenty of accidents. So is it largely speed? And I, I assume, I assume speed and roadway conditions, that seems to be the two factors that are contributing to the accidents?
I can't speak to what we call the primary collision factor, that's what we use in our higher patrol terms. So I don't know, uh, it wasn't the investigating officer for both the collisions that I spoke of in the last three months. Um, I don't know what the primary, primary collision factor was. I will say regarding roadway conditions, uh, I, roadway conditions didn't have, in my opinion, when you say roadway conditions, that you're talking about the condition of the asphalt?
Well, it could be that, well, that or the shoulder. I mean, I know you, you know, get your tire off and you, like, like you mentioned, the turning radius. If your, if your tire gets off the road, it can draw you off the side and then...
Regarding the last two collisions I spoke of, I don't have, I didn't get a statement from either of the drivers involved because I was not the primary investigating officer. Um, so I can't say that the roadway did play a part in that. I can't say that it contributed to it. Um, however, I, I, in, in the last over, over three years, almost three and a half years now, of patrolling up here in this capacity as a commercial officer, um, the only two traffic collisions that I've been involved in as far as trucks, uh, have been in the last three months, on Climax Road specifically, rollovers, I haven't been involved in during my time or my shift in the last three and a half years up here on any rollover traffic collisions on State Route forty-nine or State Route eighty-eight, uh, between the locations I spoke of. I'm not saying that there was not any collisions, however, if there were, I wasn't aware of any and I didn't respond to them at that time.
As to those collisions though, one of them you mentioned was coming from Nevada and going to the Bay Area. They're just driving through our town on our road that we, that's failing, that we have really no plans of fixing.
So the, the first one three months ago was coming from, you're into Nevada, was traveling down to Turlock, attempting to deliver a load of hay.
Assuming that's near the Bay Area.
But a Turlock, isn't it?
Well...
There's less commercial cops on our little backroads.
Um, they were coming, to answer your question Supervisor Cornell, they were coming from Nevada and they were traveling down to Turlock to deliver a load of hay. We actually, believe it or not, I know one of you said it, it's kind of an odd route. Um, there's a lot of, of hay, and I'm not trying to pick on the industry, I have the utmost respect for the commercial industry. I, I truly do appreciate what they do for all of us. There's a lot of hay that comes from Nevada that travels our roadways at different times of the day, and, and we need that. But I have, uh, found the majority of what we're seeing is coming from Nevada and traveling, um, out of our area, which is fine.
Ninety-five percent.
I'm sorry, sir?
Ninety-five percent.
Okay. So the hay comes from out of state?
Well, that, when it just goes through.
Okay. Uh, the, the collision recently, I speak of, that was two weeks ago, uh, it was a load that was, uh, if I remember correctly, was coming from Stockton, uh, but it was going to Carson City, Nevada.
You kind of, uh, kind of asked me that, so, so like if you're delivering hay, they have to go off of route, I assume, off of truck routes to make their deliveries? I mean, we've seen cattle trucks driving some pretty wild places. How does that function? What's that part of that equation? I mean, they have, legally they have to go off the truck route, I would assume, if they're delivering hay somewhere along, let's say, Upper Ridge, I mean, it's their delivery point.
Right. I do understand your question. So if they're delivering to a certain location, and you actually, I'll use what you just said, Upper Ridge, they do have a right to be there. So for example, it, we'll go back to Upper Ridge Road, ten ton weight restriction, twenty thousand pounds. We're going to have septic companies that have to go to service their clients. Those vehicles are most likely going to be over ten tons. They're allowed to be there because they're delivering to or coming from. They're traveling to a location. They just can't use Upper Ridge as a thoroughfare. I haven't seen, maybe there is, may, maybe Mr. Supervisor Neno knows, but I haven't seen any locations on Upper Ridge, for example, that would be getting a load of hay. So hypothetically, probably not hay.
Like Ridge Road Nursery or, or Volcano Telephone have places where they, they take deliveries? Or you even have people locally getting a load of gravel or something being brought in, that's, but you don't, you don't have a problem for that, I mean?
No, and, and it's, and I'm glad you brought the gravel. I was going to talk about aggregate material, um, the, the septic companies, propane trucks. The only way they can get there, if that's the only option, their only route, is Upper Ridge Road, then we have to use common sense on that, and they're allowed to be there. It's the through traffic.
Like, well, other questions, like with school buses, how does that, I mean, because they have to go wherever they have to go, and they're, I mean, I drove school buses for a number of years, but...
So this doesn't pertain to school buses? Because, uh, school buses are not regulated by me.
Okay.
That would be up to the county. Uh, however, the, again, I, while I'm out enforcing and on patrol, I'm not looking for a school bus on Upper Ridge Road that exceeds ten tons and makes a move.
Yeah, okay.
I just want to clarify.
Well, that's fair, that's fair. I just wanted to ask that a question.
And, and again, I just wanted to put it out there. I don't, I, I don't want it to, to shed a negative light on the hay industry. That, that's not what I was here to do. It's just an example of, of, of what we have. Um, unless, unless someone's getting a delivery of hay on, uh, Climax Road or, uh, Lower Ridge Road, I, I'm not, I, there are other routes. Again, Climax currently is legal.
You, you know, one thing I will say, I, I've been mulling this over and thinking about it even before Logan brought it up. I was looking more like a length, because there's definitely a length problem there, and, but what he's brought up is kind of like, it's not that, that much farther going around. I mean, yeah, I, I want to wait on a local road, so I get where Logan's coming from.
One minute longer.
And it's, it's getting to be, I think, more and more, basically out of state traffic on a local road that we got to maintain. So, um, yeah, I can see where you might want to close, close it down to, um, through traffic like that. One question I have though, what if somebody has a business up there at their house and they have, you know, eighteen wheeler or ten wheeler that they park there, and that's basically like their, where they park, or I guess your terminal? Would you, would there be a problem with that?
So that would be up to the county. The way we look at it, at that certain specific situation, which is going to be case by case, if that's their terminal, we can understand and we can work with that person. Um, somebody that has...
Yeah, a lot, a lot of small businesses, you know, they don't all have a big fancy yard, they just throw work out of their house and...
Right.
Yeah, loggers, last time we were talking about Climax, there was a logger that was, uh, asked the question, what was he going to do?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I don't, I have a personal problem with people. Plenty of people complain about neighbor parking there, but people try to accommodate one, they're generally, it seems like, hey, you know, Morse, you've got to go to work, you know, hauling gravel or logs or whatever, and gets up early in the morning and they, neighbors generally seem to be accommodating.
Right. And I want to put it out there. I, I know that in our county, in our community specifically, we have a lot of commercial drivers. We have local terminals and local operators. I appreciate what they all do for us, I really do. Um, and if you truly think about it, the, the commercial industry is extremely important to us. Truck traffic is important to us. Um, I'll use the term goods loosely, but without the trucking industry, without the commercial industry, we wouldn't have the goods we have.
We'd be hungry.
Yeah, we would. We wouldn't have the building materials that we, we utilize to build our homes, to house our families. Uh, we wouldn't have the clothes that are on our back that we wear today. We wouldn't have the groceries, the food or the meat we put on our table to feed our families. So in some form or another, the goods that we rely on on a daily basis are transported by the trucking industry. I appreciate what they do. I can speak locally to our truck, uh, the trucking industry here, the terminals and the carriers that we have in our county. In the last three and a half years, what I've observed, they do operate very safely. I appreciate their compliance. Um, and any time of, any, any type of small issue we have, every carrier I've ever dealt with is always willing to work together to figure out how we can be compliant. And so I do appreciate the safety of all of our commercial drivers in our area and also the carriers in our area. Appreciate what they do for us.
I wish you were in charge of carb. Very good, very good. Was not touching that one.
Any other questions about the roadways?
I, I do have one.
Yes, sir.
You said you came down and dropped into Jackson and, and made a left turn lane and got, and it was fourteen and a half minutes? You must have hit that left turn lane at the right time.
So since you brought that up, that is correct.
It is a mess.
So, I didn't count the number of controlled intersections, uh, on State Route forty-nine or State Route eighty-eight on that route that I traveled. I, I didn't count them. I did get caught at the light, uh, since you brought that up, the left turn lane from State Route forty-nine, southbound, to State Route eighty-eight, eastbound. I paused my timer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I paused my timer. I, what I wanted to know was, in perfect conditions, if I didn't get stopped at any of these stoplights, how long it would take me to travel based on the length of the roadway, as well as the maximum speed of that roadway? Um, when I traveled on Climax Road westbound from State Route eighty-eight, where it intersected onto Ridge Road, and it went down to Lower Ridge Road, down into Sutter Creek and Martel, uh, I did not hit, I did get lucky, I didn't hit any of those traffic signals. So I didn't have to pause my timer, but I felt that since I was able to get that time of that route that I just mentioned, Climax Road onto Ridge Road, down into State Route eighty-eight, westbound, that I felt I should probably do the same for State Route eighty, forty-nine and State Route eighty-eight. So I did pause it. But on a perfect day, if you hit all those lights perfect, I don't know how to do that. But hypothetically, if you traveled that route based on clear daylight today, light traffic conditions, uh, great weather and a dry roadway with those max speed limits, that's what it would take you to travel. Right.
I do have a gee whiz question for you. Um, shoot, it was probably when Heather first got here, we went through some paperwork. And as I'm looking at Teresa, our historian here, it was from the nineteen fifties, and, uh, it was part of the Eisenhower thing that we were in over height. Eighty-eight was an over height, um, ability, because there's no overpasses.
Corridor, yeah.
Yeah, over height corridor. Is that still in effect to this day?
So what you're referencing regarding the, you, you said it was a Dwight D Eisenhower?
Yeah, it was, it was, I, I...
It was for moving military equipment.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that was...
That's why Mormon immigrant trail is there, they take them down there.
Yeah. I, I can't speak to that, that's the first I've heard of that, but I, I can speak to what are the, the specifications or the limits. There's no vehicles that are allowed to be anything greater than fourteen feet high, as far as you're talking about your height restriction, unless it has a permit. Anything that is, that is greater than fourteen feet would need a permit to travel on State Route eighty-eight. You are correct in saying that we don't have the overpasses on State Route eighty-eight. I have been involved in several what we call extralegal load escort details, where it's a vehicle that is not within the parameters. It's, it's, it's wider than the allowable width.
Right, you know, we get the ships that come out of Tahoe or...
Correct.
Right.
I've been, uh, I've been involved in a lot of that. I'm not involved in every single one, but the unit that I, that I'm assigned to now is in charge of, uh, we're a part of this county. So any type of extralegal load that is over height, over length, over width, or even overweight, that's permitted, and they require an escort, we actually will escort them. Um, so again...
It was just a neat old paperwork to see.
I think the train trestle there outside of Ione is probably the height restriction in the county.
Yeah, they, they talked about it when it went to Jackson, and it would go out to sixteen and then to Sacramento. But it was, it was just kind of neat to, to see.
And it's kind of one random question. So like with the new battery powered semis, is that affecting gross vehicle weight? How does that factor in?
I appreciate you bringing that up, because I had actually discussed that with Supervisor Cornell, and I actually, I, I forgot to make a note about that, so thank you. Due to the fact that we do have truck tractors that are now electric, and I spoke with Supervisor Cornell about this, we have one specifically in our area. I've spoke to the driver, a phenomenal driver and a phenomenal individual.
I know he's a good guy, yeah.
He's a great guy, great man. Um, California has come out with a law, and I meant to note it on here, and I apologize that I did not put it on the handout that I made. That's my error. But there is a law that allows them to be in excess, actually to be up, in upwards of, of two thousand pounds. So due to the fact, the weight of the batteries, I'm not sure the design of these trucks, but I know that, that obviously if they are an electric, electric, excuse me, for an example, a Tesla truck, that they can be, uh, up to two thousand pounds. So if you have a truck tractor essentially in a combination that would be allowed to be eighty thousand pounds, potentially we could have more weight on that roadway.
I think they have a lower center of gravity too, just for, uh, just because of the batteries replaced, but...
Okay.
I would think, I mean, I, I don't, not tractor at least anyway, but...
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions?
Thank you, sir.
Any public comment?
I just have, I just want to, maybe you know some of this. I, I did go through some of the, the vehicle code sections about local restrictions on roads, and it's not absolute. Um, there's some that say you can, you can go down to sixty feet in length. Um, there's ones that, uh, in residential areas, you can restrict trucks up to, um, the, um, different weights. And then there's one that says you can prohibit commercial vehicles exceeding, uh, fourteen thousand pounds if by accepted engineering standards, the road cannot support such a vehicle. So I just don't, um, I want to, I mean, I don't know if you know, but whether the county is limited in, in what roads they can close to commercial vehicles or not?
I don't have that answer. Yeah, I don't know what, what roads, and I hate to use the term closed. I think that maybe gives the impression that we're completely closing the roadway to through traffic or all traffic, or just closing it period. I like to use the term restricted, because as a passenger vehicle, if I'm driving my Honda Accord, most likely I'm probably, can drive pretty much any roadway. Um, commercial vehicles are different, so we use the term restricted. I'm not sure. I know that, uh, it's the county that would impose the restrictions. California Highway Patrol, we don't have, um, any input on that. We don't have any weight in that, we don't have any say in that.
Okay.
So it's plausible we could make the restrictions whatever we want. So we could say if, you know, if you're an Amador County resident, and you're working in the area, you're allowed to be at eighty thousand pounds. If you're passing through from Nevada, you...
No, I don't think you can do that.
We can't?
No.
Come on.
Sorry.
You restrict everybody, but not not somebody.
What, they're the ones paying for it?
Certainly can't treat, um, locals different than non-locals.
Yeah.
Really?
That's a thing.
I mean, the issue about like deliveries or, or, uh, you know, if they're going to or somewhere on that road length, then they can go. But, um, I, I think there's, you're sort of, um, limited in, in how, how sort of absolute you can make your restrictions. So...
And some of the stuff too, I think sometimes you can put up signage, but you just can't, it's not enforceable. It ends up being like a recommended truck route de facto. You can say restrict, I mean, I know we did some traffic studies in the city, and we went, and it was basically like, well, it actually, you can drive forty-five, we posted at twenty-five. It's like, it doesn't say recommended, but that's what it is. If you go to ticket somebody, they're going to say, well, it's, the survey says forty miles an hour, and it's not enforceable that way. But at least it's people thinking driving slower, that's kind of what ends up happening. But that was just one particular road, coming off of Howard Park into downtown, but...
So with that, when you talk about speed and speed surveys, I don't have the knowledge or education on, on the survey process. However, would like to think that the speed survey would, would be a different type of survey than what it would be for like a weight survey on a roadway.
And that's one thing too, you restrict the speed, and then that maybe pushes them off because it's so slow. I mean, that could be a thing too.
Well, Climax Road currently is...
I'm just saying.
Climax is a raceway.
Yeah, I get, and I'm just here to bring the facts. I'm not necessarily in favor or against.
Appreciate that, yeah.
But Climax Road is thirty miles per hour at this time.
Yeah.
It hasn't detoured in...
One question would be like, what's an eighteen wheeler with like, say, a forty-eight foot flatbed weighed roughly empty, maybe? It'd be around twenty thousand pounds? Twenty-six?
Yeah, I, here, if, if I can use as example, thank you. I, I trust what Gary would say that twenty-six, I've weighed out a lot of trucks. Most of the trucks we weigh are loaded, so it's really hard to give an, an unladen weight.
Now's the next question. So how would you enforce that unless you have a scale? Do you have a jump scale you carry or something?
I do. I have four currently in my truck, because it sits out there and they are calibrated, and they are accurate. And I do utilize them for enforcement. Yeah. So with, with a truck being twenty-six thousand, a, a truck and trailer, um, don't want to drag this on, but when you brought up a forty-eight foot specifically, and I didn't want to go too far in the weeds here, a truck and trailer, uh, any trailer that's... and I didn't wanna go too far in the weeds here, a truck and trailer, uh, any trailer that's greater than forty-eight feet is restricted to a forty-foot kingpin to rear axle setting. That's, that's what the law states. If you have a trailer that's forty-eight feet or less, as long as it doesn't exceed forty-eight feet, you can have an unlimited kingpin to rear axle setting. For those who aren't familiar, that means you can push the rear axles of the trailer back as far as you want. So the further back that you have those rear axles, for example, like you used Supervisor Onetto on a forty-eight foot trailer, you could have a kingpin to rear axle setting essentially forty-four, forty-five, forty-six feet long potentially.
So it cheat ten feet in some turns.
So depending on how far back that is, the, the commercial vehicles have met the length restriction, they're not over length. They've met the rate restriction already, eight thousand pounds, but when you have a forty-eight foot trailer, they're allowed to be unlimited k- kingpin to rear axle setting. That gets even worse in the rear wheel cheat and the off tracking of, of those tight turns and the curves on Climax and on Ridge Road. Eighty-eight, we don't have that issue.
Okay.
Yeah?
We could sit there and go on forever on this one.
Yeah.
Any public comment? Gary?
Gotta come up here, I'm sorry.
You do.
Gotta move. I'm apologizing right off the bat.
You'd like me to sit down, Gary, or you? Okay.
I like Logan's idea on looking at these roads. Um, and some of these roads, unfortunately, the, the county hasn't been able to go out. I mean, a lot of people joke around and say they need to put a bumper sticker that says, "I'm not drunk, I'm dodging potholes." Um, how much money actually comes in from the registered vehicles and their taxes and their registration to Amador County? And how much of that money that comes into Amador County is actually going in that exact direction faithfully? I already know the answer pretty much, but, uh, same thing with commercial vehicles. Uh, one of our trucks, four thousand eighty-three dollars a year for just the tractor to be licensed. That doesn't include your federal weight fees, your state weight fees, your California li- uh, paper, everything combined. It, it's pretty, pretty shocking and, but I'd be happy to pay double that if it went straight back to fixing our roads. Because the amount of money we put into these vehicles, pickup trucks, big trucks, to repair them, it'd be easy to pay double just to get them fixed. If, but I'm afraid it would end up going to, I won't mention the directions that bother me, but how much, can we come up with any kind of a close number as to how much is coming in directly, specifically allocated for in the past? That's the statutes that it was written for. How many of those dollars are being diverted to other needs we have?
As in the county or the state?
In our county. I, I realize it's the same in every county. Everybody's in the same boat.
Specifically, we put a hundred percent of what we get from, from the state, from the fuel taxes, DMV into our roads or the, uh, operation of our, our personnel, that's directly public works type of people.
Yeah.
Um, but I will, as I, I wanna back that truck up, excuse the terminology, um, the state uses it in different directions. This, uh, before they give it to us, um, I just read up an article how, um, that part of the, uh, fuel taxes were used for, for manure digesters for farms, you know, an eight million dollar manure, um, digester. So that is before it comes, you know, that's the, the pot that, you know, we share out to the whole, you know, within, uh, you know, all the roads and everything else. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense, except the fact that it's not right. I don't care if the state's doing it, the feds are doing it, or the counties are doing it. The county shouldn't get just a piece, you know, of the pie. This county should get the full piece of the pie to put back into their infrastructure. And a lot of money goes into paying for our highway patrol and everything else. Maybe they should have more money. If it wasn't going out here to all these other places, a lot of these people deserve more money, including our county workers.
I agree.
Okay, that's me.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else?
Thank you, Officer Morris.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your time.
All right, and the education. They wanna take a ten minute break and then we'll come back for the public hearing.
Perfect.
All right.
Do, the board wanna-
Yeah, do we wanna-
Direction on any of that? Or is it just a-
I would suggest that we, uh, look into the process to declare certain roads, truck routes.
Oh, but they-
Clear enough?
Cancel local roads as truck routes.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, I guess that'd be probably better stated, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think you have to look at too, I mean, some roads, like maybe the Ridge Road is not, not that mu- not, not that much farther time wise, mileage wise, I mean, maybe you could say, hey, it's no longer a tr- no trucks or a weight limit. But there's some roads where I think you're gonna have a long ways around, um, I don't think that'd be prudent on our part, that's.
I've seen some states where they'll put, uh, signs up on a little longer route, it'll just say adds one minute just for the truck driver's knowledge. But he's doing thirty miles an hour, I mean, it might be faster to go the other way, but that might be a way to, oh, one way to handle it too, or at least kinda mitigate it.
In deference to Officer Morris, we won't cancel-
Yeah.
We'll redefine.
Yeah, there you go.
Be better strict.
There you go.
Yeah, so I, I think maybe you look into maybe, um, possible weight restrictions, length restrictions.
Uh, um, any particular roads other than Climax?
Climax is the only one I really know about that. Yeah, I would look at, uh, I own Michigan Bar, it's, yeah, it's really bad on the, on the SAC side, on our side, it's quite a bit better, but it's, uh, heavily traveled, there's trucks out there all the time, and it's narrow spots and some pretty tart, pretty sharp turns.
Piddletown Road.
Have we, I don't think I've even through traffic on Piddletown.
We don't have a lot, so-
Little, not much. So it's, it won't get a lot of protest if we were to do Shake Ridge. I'm just thinking people coming out of Nevada that stay on eighty-eight.
Right, yes.
Stay on eighty-eight and then they stay on eighty-eight. And so Shake Ridge and Climax would be the two I would suggest.
All right, maybe we could, uh, look and see what other rural counties have done in the same situation. Maybe we have a template somewhere we could look at.
That'd be good.
Stick to same thing we have on-
Or just put the signs up.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think, you could look at Shake Ridge, but I don't think anybody's using Shake Ridge unless they're delivering something or-
Yeah, lost.
I think it's, yeah, I wouldn't even bother. But we can, we can throw it in the mix.
Do we need a motion or?
No, no direction. Yeah, we're good?
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Resess.
We'll come back at one or two, take a little break.
We'll call this meeting back to order. We're going to jump down to the public hearing. The schedule for 10:30 or as close to 10:30 as we can get. Surveying Department requests to hold a public hearing and adopt the resolution of approval for a public utility easement abandonment in relation to a certificate of merger as requested by Brian and Teresa Ordvig. The properties involved in said merger are lots 284 and 249, Lake Comanche Village, subdivision unit one, as recorded in book three of subdivision maps at page eight. Assessors partial numbers 03-190-009 and 003-190-014. Right now, we will open the public hearing.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Roger Piddo, your Amador County surveyor. This little project started way back in November or December of '23, and there was controversy involved in Lake Comanche Village over merging and the like. It's since been resolved, but the applicant pulled his application until now. The law that was encumbering it has been changed, and I recommend approval. It's rather straightforward.
Any questions?
I got one, it's a five-foot public utility easement.
Yes.
What's the purpose of it? I mean, is it just something put in place outdated, no purpose for it, basically?
Yeah, Brian, those maps dating from the '60s, '70s, and '80s are largely out of touch. We don't put sideline easements and crossing easements around subdivisions, excuse me, subdivision lots anymore because most of the services come off the front. There's occasions that we have to do a custom easement, but these have largely gone away in today's times.
Really no point of having them, then? Okay, good enough.
Generally not. Sometimes if we have something as built in, of course, we want to keep it.
Any public comment on this issue? Any rumors?
Not at this time.
Move to close public hearing. All right, we had a motion by Supervisor Brown and a second by Supervisor Epperson to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Our action is to adopt the resolutions.
No move? Second?
All right, we had a motion and a second to adopt the resolutions as presented in the board packet.
Roger that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Roger. Oh, all right, well.
He's welcome. Welcome, guys. Which was easier.
All right, we are on 3C. Discussion of possible action relative to a proposal by Supervisor Cornell to create a pilot project to place chip seal on certain county roads. If successful, the project could be expanded and given additional funding. Direction to staff is the suggested action.
There's a printout in your packet that tells a lot of the positive results of going to chip seal. Part of this idea came from the fact that if Measure Q had passed, it was really going to go towards Ridge Road, Shake Ridge Road, some of our major roads, arterial roads, but we still didn't have a great plan for some of our smaller backroads like Meadow Drive, Sugar Pine Drive, Silver Drive, Irish Town Road, I'm just driving down Highway 88 right now, Taboo Road, and they are, the speed limits on those roads are a lot lower, and so I just, a lot of us that pave our driveways, we actually don't pave our driveways here locally, we chip seal our driveways. And so I did some research, there's a lot of other counties that do it. I just heard this morning from a former resident of Truckee that it was a must in Truckee, where they get a lot of snow to keep the water out of the roads, because otherwise, especially up there with the freezing thaw, if there's water in the roads, they fail. So, chip sealing is a process that seals the cracks that are currently in the road and keeps the water out. Water in the roads is what actually speeds the failure because it creates hydraulic pressure under the road, it causes the substructure to fail. So, it is not as good as blacktop, but it is one-seventh of the cost. And it's something we could do with our, I believe we can do with our current road crews, which to me would mean that we could take much smaller amounts of money and put it on the road. And a lot of that idea came from meetings and budget discussions with different departments when I would hear things like, well, it's not like $200,000 would pave a road. So, why cut that $200,000? And it just made me motivated to find a way that $200,000 could pave a road.
If you travel outside of California, there's a lot of states, all their county roads are largely chip sealed. They'll build them and then they chip seal them, and they're a lot smoother, and they last a lot longer because of the same reason.
For $3,500, you can do 600 feet of road, that's materials, which means for $1 million, you could actually do about 30 miles of road. For $40,000, then you could do a mile. A lot of the roads that I was thinking of when this first came were roads that we haven't lost, but we're about to.
Yeah.
So, I mean, just the road that I live on, Irish Town Road, a couple of years ago, I noticed it just alligatored, which means it broke and cracked, but it's still there. And if we don't do something, at some point, that road fails and then it needs a complete rebuild. So, although it's not the best, most preferred method, it'll actually give us, it'll buy us 10 years on these roads. And you can reapply it over and over again, and driveways that have reapplied it over and over again have ended up having inches of coverage, so.
That's like a Martin Lane, where they did a bunch of digouts and replaces, where now it's already starting the same thing, it's starting to crack a little bit. If you chip seal it, it probably would extend that life considerably. No, when I was on council, that was one of the things we did, we'd find roads that we could chip seal, and those roads still are pretty well hanging in there as compared to other ones we did not seal.
Greg, what liability do we have for chip seal? For, like myself, I was coming back from Yellowstone, and I hit a chip sealed road, and I just destroyed the windshield of my tow dolly vehicle from my RV.
Well, it would, I mean, my understanding is, you put down the chip seal and then you sweep it, there shouldn't be that much.
I hit it the next day, they just put it down the day before, and I hit it the next day, everything hadn't coagulated or whatever, that portion of it.
But there was a, I do recall, a claim that we received where a contractor had done a chip seal, and we had one or two vehicles that had driven on it right after, and they submitted damage claims, they weren't significant, but yeah, if we did chip seal and that occurred, very likely that damage would be something we'd be responsible for, although, you know, if we swept it and did everything reasonable, you know, arguably, we'd have a defense.
You put some signage up and some, you know, reduce speed for a few days, that usually is enough to kind of get that mitigated.
It probably depends on how good the job is done, too, because I know they did a job on Shandor Road when it first came on board.
That was the one.
And there was a fair number of claims on that. I don't know if they got too much rock, not enough oil. It seemed like under oak trees, the oil didn't stick real well, or for some reason, it seemed like, I wonder under oak tree, maybe there's like sap from the oak tree or something, but a lot of it just blew off there, had to redo it. But I think it's worth looking at for sure because it's pretty obvious we don't have enough money for roads, or roads are degrading fast, and I think what Logan was saying about cracks and sealing the cracks is, it's pretty critical, that and ditches.
What speed were you going? Were you on a road that was a 60 mile an hour road?
Yeah, it was 55.
So, I think if we start looking at roads like Meadow where the speed, I know some people drive fast, but some of our 25 mile an hour roads, it should really mitigate that.
And that's what I was hoping we'd push for before we went into any of the, you know, higher speed roads, you know.
There's also a secondary process that's a little bit more money, but you can actually seal them, you can spray another coat of oil after you've sprayed your oil and then put your chips, you can spray another coat of oil that would keep that from happening. So, on our faster roads.
Theoretically.
You could do that. Theoretically, but again, then it's just more money and less.
Less mileage.
Less mileage.
And that's the other way you do it when there are plows involved, so that keeps the chips from being peeled back up.
Yep. So, your roads would get the extra special treatment.
The extra special. Upcountry really wants that.
Yeah, they need something.
Yes, I think public work should be addressed in its tooth, not here today or what.
The, Richard's on vacation, but I'm comfortable with taking direction. What I think, what we'd like to do is, if the board wants to go forward, get some solid pricing for what we do and exactly what we need to buy. We think it's three things, but get the board to say this is something we really want to investigate and have staff understand that this is where we're going. There is some resistance, and I think that will put it to bed. Because ultimately, we have to do something different. We've all saw the results of the Measure Q in November, and there's no cavalry coming in. We've managed to get $2.3 million to go pave and rework upper ridge, and staff came in with a $4 million estimate, and the board needs to say that's not okay. So, this is how we do it.
Do you think now I'll get my dollar from the DA's budget?
If we could show, you know, hey, we saved $15,000 and we put it right here on this road, and take a picture of it and put it on Facebook, I think it'd be easier to deal with some of the budget cuts that are coming up if we're actually able to show that the people who purchased infrastructure got some infrastructure. And I have a, we have a local contractor here who's willing to train for free, volunteer to train our staff how to do it. We need a couple small pieces of inexpensive equipment to pull it off.
I think we also look at striping costs, too, obviously, because some of the roads are going to be repainted, and then we need a capital improvement list, which roads, what level of degradation, or which ones actually qualify, you know, which ones it makes sense for, and then get that working list and try to spread that around a little bit, the most critical roads, get them first.
I did that, they were all in my district, so.
Bet they were.
Yeah.
I don't doubt that at all.
I guess not all your district. You know, some equipment we have would probably work, you probably need some more like, maybe like rubber tire roller, you probably need like a spreader box or chip of some sort.
I believe we have one of those, I was told we have one of those.
Probably a new pot.
And a pot.
I don't think you'd use a pot, maybe a pot, but if you're doing much length at all, I mean, lots of these come in the truck and just spray them. I mean, maybe do a short section, maybe. I don't know how far a pot would go, you know, far as coverage wise.
It's right here, so, yeah.
But yeah, I don't know how much.
We can look into it.
For the record, the Public Work Director did send me an email just to me concerning his concerns about purchasing equipment for a low-level project when we have such big projects to do. And I kind of took it the same as you, so we're going to keep working on the $4 million ones we can't afford, instead of spending $700,000 and doing 20 miles of road, something like that with your figures.
I think we'll see something on the next agenda that will address that concern. I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay.
Is that enough direction, or?
Yes.
Any public comment?
We will dig into it and bring it back quickly.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, an update by Teresa Gidi regarding the items from Chukey Store that are on loan to a museum in Hong Kong, presentation only.
Good morning, Teresa Gidi, records and volunteer administrator. I'm wearing my archives hat today. I just wanted to come and kind of give you guys an update on what's happening with the objects that we loaned to the Hong Kong Museum of History. The Hong Kong Museum of History is like a Smithsonian-level museum in Hong Kong. The first thing I wanted to say was Sonia Ng, who is the guest curator, she actually lives in San Francisco, she wanted to make sure that I expressed to you guys that how much they appreciate the Board of Supervisors making this loan, and also the community of Amador County and the people here, that it is a really significant piece of history that, you know, they are able to share. And it's interesting, kind of the history of this loan, it almost didn't happen because when we started on this project prior to COVID, and so we pretty much lost three years' worth of time, you know, trying to put this whole thing together, and I was at the point where I was just going to put all the stuff back, you know, on the shelves and put it away, that we're going to do today, um, and just talk about and take questions about people who are interested in what we were doing. Um, and then I also brought, I gave you the packet of the, but I also brought, part of what we're going to get out of this loan is translations of the materials that we had. We had this wonderful old, you know, history, but we couldn't read it because it was in Chinese and it was actually an older dialect of Chinese, so not even the average Chinese person could read it. And so I brought an example of some of the stuff that we have that she's translated. And then she's given us a, you know, a full translation of, of that material. And I can leave this with you if you guys are interested. So, um, I'd like to introduce Elaine really quick, just to give her a chance to kind of give a little bit of the history of how we met Sonia and put this all together.
Welcome.
So I've seen some of you before. Um, I'm Elaine Zorbus and I'm on the board of the, um, Fiddletown Preservation Society and a long time volunteer at the Amador County Archives and also a local author of, um, history relating to Fiddletown and also the Chinese. And this exhibit is really the product of a lot, a collaboration between the Preservation Society, which manages the Chukey, um, museum and the archives. Um, and one is really the extension of the other because, um, in the early two thousands, quite a bit of paper material that was in the Chukey Store, um, letters, receipts, books were in a trunk. And, um, we transferred them to the Amador County Archives. And that was for long-term preservation. The archives has a temperature-controlled environment. It was for safety from fire. And it was also to make those, um, materials accessible to the public. And, uh, the archivist at the time, Larry Sonato, had catalogued most of them and they are in the online catalog of the archives. So a person from home could look up the Chukey collection and find some of these materials. However, quite a few of them were in Chinese. And, um, for years I would try to nail any Chinese person I, um, came across to try to translate them, not knowing that then, that there was a difference between Mandarin, which is, um, spoken throughout China today, and Cantonese, which the people who came here in the nineteenth century spoke. And, um, I later learned that, as, um, Teresa said, it's not only, um, Cantonese, but we really needed somebody that had a bit of historical background on the Chinese in California to interpret the documents. So it wasn't until 2013 that I found the right person to do the translation. And that is Dr. Sonia Ing. Uh, she lives at Concord. And at the time she was an official court translator for, um, Contra Costa County. She's fluent in both Cantonese and Mandarin. And she's also, um, a person who is a historian and very, very interested in the Chinese in California. And she was working with the city of Hanford. Um, they have an area called China Alley and translating many of the documents there. So she was very enthusiastic about the Chukey Museum and she came with me to the archives. And we had just a very exciting time in 2013 because she discovered all kinds of rare materials, um, in the archives as well as in the museum. And, um, she, uh, just lost my train of thought. She accompanied me to the archives anyway, and you'll see many of those materials, um, in the presentation today. So Dr. Ing actually lives in Concord, but she goes to, um, Hong Kong quite often. And she has many connections there. And one of her connections was with Osman Chan, who was the director of the Hong Kong Museum, um, of History. I've been there. It's a wonderful museum. And she brought him in 2018 to, um, visit both the Chukey Store and the Archives with the idea of putting together an exhibit on the Chinese experience in California with the early immigrants who first came during the gold rush and stayed to often build their own communities. So, um, Dr. Osman Chan came, he went to the archives. Um, the archives in the meanwhile had, um, acquired some, um, objects that the county paid for, which were on the market, um, and, and they belonged to the Chukey Store. They had been sold off probably when the last resident was alive. So, um, he also looked at those and they sorted through them, um, possibly choosing something for the, um, exhibit. So, um, I would just like to say that Dr. Sonia Ing is really the person who I believe is the genesis of this exhibit and also has a great responsibility for the content of what's in it. So there's a lot from both Hanford and the Chukey Store. And I'm very proud that the board voted to lend these, um, objects to the Hong Kong Museum as part of a cultural exchange with another country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Start the slideshow. Okay, so this is a picture of the Hong Kong Museum of History. And, uh, this slide just kind of tells a little bit of the history of the museum. Um, you can go to the next. Um, and then this just talks about the, uh, Gold Mountain is the, is the, just the, uh, exhibit that we're, we're talking about. And it, and it basically just covers like when they came, what happened, how they lived and all of that. And when they came to, uh, during the gold rush. Okay, next. Oops, we went back. Next. No. Go forward. Okay, so this, uh, this is just how large the museum is and, um, and some of the ideas of the exhibits that are there. And, um, it opened in, on November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. They sent us an invitation like three days before and it's like, I don't think I could even fly there that fast. But anyway, um, uh, and then it talks about how many people loaned stuff to, to this exhibit. Okay, next. Uh, that is from the Orville Chinese Temple. And basically it's, it's, you know, saying that, um, uh, they didn't actually want to immigrate to America. They just came to America to try to make their fortune and send it back to China and then eventually return to China. That's, that was the goal of most Chinese who came. Okay, next. Okay, and then this just talks about how Hong Kong was like the place to go between. So it was, if you wanted to come to America from China, you had to go through Hong Kong. If you wanted goods from China, you had to order it through Hong Kong and they would ship it to America. If you wanted to come back, you went back through Hong Kong. And so it just talks about how Hong Kong was the key. And then our portion of it is just talking about how people were here and, and, and what, what happened with them. Next. So this is as you first come into the gallery and you'll see on the next slide, there's a little map. And this just shows, so you come in, see where number one is, that's where you walk in. And then you work your way through and then our exhibit is in six and seven. Okay, next. Um, and then, uh, this talks about just in the different sections, what, what you'll find in those. And, um, Chukey obviously is featured in six. So, go ahead. Um, go ahead. Okay. So this is actually the display. So it looks like it's, you know, a couple of walls of the Chukey and then the artifacts are in the case in front. The little kind of table thing on the left is like an interactive screen. So you can zoom in and zoom out. It has pictures of the Chukey on it. And then on that back wall are some of the cases that have the artifacts in them. Okay. That's a picture of the Chukey in Fiddletown. And if you guys haven't seen it, you really need to go see it. It's pretty cool. Very, very cool. That's a picture of the inside of the Chukey. So you see how they tried to kind of emulate the look of the store in the display that they did. With, they see the, the drawers and you'll see in the display they did this, you know, bank of, of little small drawers and stuff. Okay. So, so, so they see the, the display where the picture is. That is, um, Fang, Fang Chow? Fang Chow Yu. And, uh, he was the last person to live in the store. And those two papers next to him are actually letters he received from family members, uh, from China. And most people weren't, were not literate. Uh, so they actually had to hire somebody to write the letters. So those are actually in two different handwriting. And then, um, and then display in front here, there's some stamps and then the mortar and pestle and stuff. I think I have a closer shot of that. Go ahead. Okay, and then see, uh, the, the white table. That's actually the, uh, bone reclamation, um, books. And the thing that's going to be really great about that is we'll find out who was here, when they were here. You know, whether or not they died or they, you know, they went back to China or, you know, we'll learn a lot of information about people who were here from those books. So, go ahead. And then there's just another shot of the whole display. Okay, okay, now this is a close-up and that shows, these are all items that we sent from the Chukey, from the Chukey and the archives. So the first one is a, an, a traditional wedding. The second one is almanacs. The third one is a little hand mirror that probably somebody carried in their purse or something. Um, the number four is, um, those are, uh, incense. So the one in the round box are coils. And then the, the red kind of paper things, those have sticks of, of, um, of incense in them. And I just thought it was really cool that we actually had these things from, you know, a hundred years ago that are still intact, that, you know, they obviously had to do, um, restoration on them. So they did a lot of, of work on the, on the stuff that they brought to make it, you know, really, you know, pop. But it, you know, I mean, I, I just think they did a beautiful job. Then the sign is from the Chukey and that basically says, you know, welcome to foreigners. Um, and then the, um, number six is like a, a wooden box. And if you look on the inside, it was actually made from an old crate. You can see this, the, uh, the stamp, you know, like the shipping stamp on the inside. So they took found material and actually made things that they used, you know, with it. Uh, the, the number seven is a mi- um, um, mailbox. And then number eight, they really, uh, the, the, um, the people who borrowed it were, um, really excited because that is actually a tea that comes from Hong Kong. And so it, it really tells the story about how Hong Kong was, you know, um, integral and the connection between China and America. Okay, and then the box of the little stamps, that's actually, um, a gambling game. And it's kind of like a lottery. And those are very rare because typically they were not in the grocery stores. They started out in the grocery stores, but then they opened up gambling houses and then that's where those stamps would go. And then the two rubber stamps are actually, you know, if you purchase something at Chukey, then they would stamp it. And so that's, that's what those are. Okay, next. Okay, so this is a, a mortar and pestle. And then the wooden scene that looks kind of like a, a guitar or violin, that's actually a gold scale. And those were in pretty rough shape when we sent them over and they're pristine now. They're, they're really good. The, the wooden part of the pestle was completely coming off from the, from the, uh, stone part. And so they did a lot of restoration on both of those. Okay, next. Yeah, see, and then the gold scale, you know, it was dirty and dull and, you know, and so they got that all cleaned up. Looks really good. Okay, and then there's a close-up of Fang Chow Yu and, um, and the letters. And it just kind of, the bottom part just kind of tells the story of, of, um, his contact with his family. Uh, go ahead. Um, then these are the, uh, donation records. These were for like, um, different temples that people here may have donated to. So, um, there's a, looks like a temple in Sacramento and something in San Francisco. Okay, next. Okay, and then these are the, the most valuable. These are our bone reparation, uh, books. And those are from, ones from eighteen sixty-four and the others from eighteen sixty-five. And basically what they would do is they would start a fund. If someone passed away and they wanted their bones brought back to China, then they would, you know, people would donate to get the bones, uh, transferred back to China. Okay. And that's just more of a close-up and it tells more of the story of the bone reparations. And they did a lot of restoration on those books as well. Okay, that's it. And then I do have some videos if you guys want to see. They did videos of the walking through the exhibit. Yeah, I think that's. Yeah, no, that's the, that's the other one. Is that the video? Yeah, there it is. Okay. So if you click on it, yeah. So that just shows, you know, taking a, a pan view. Okay, so if you, yeah, if you click twice, it'll get you to the next one. That's the same one. There you go. Go ahead and try the next one and see if it'll work. There's a really good shot. Yeah, go ahead and see if that one will work. Well, doesn't look like they want to cooperate. So if you guys want to see the videos, you can come by the archives and, and I'll be happy to show you. Or come on April fifth and, uh, Sonia will do a presentation on, um, on the, just on the exhibit. So, does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. I'm good. Very interesting. It's cool.
Yeah, well, it's really cool. I, it's really exciting, so.
As I mentioned earlier, when we were moving the depot there in Ione, they actually found Chinese coins that probably slipped into their pockets. They're restored somewhere, but yeah.
Neat.
Melitecting found locks and bottles and coins there.
Uh huh, great. Okay.
It is, uh, it's interesting, uh, this whole process has been very interesting because when it started, we weren't sure whether or not we were giving these things to somebody that would take them and we'd never see them again.
Right.
And, uh, uh, but then we've had, uh, we've had the certified translations of, of, uh, all the stuff that we found and they're restoring it and they're going to give it back to us in the end, so.
Yeah.
It's been a good thing.
December twenty twenty-six.
Right.
So it's, it's kind of a time capsule of history, at least, you know, this area.
It really is. It really, really is.
On another subject, we, John Corolla was here a couple of weeks ago and he had a picture of the Kit Carson tree.
Yeah, the place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was that, he get that from the archives?
So, uh, I, it would, the archives is not the place to display that because archives is, is papers. So the museum.
Picture of it, just a picture of it.
Oh, I have pictures of it, yeah. Yeah.
Surprise when there was one trying to track that down.
Yeah, I ha- I have pictures of it. I have a couple.
There's information in the back that one you gave us, but I'll get it from John probably.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
What it is, what Teresa, John Corolla is saying, hey, the, um, the Kit Carson tree.
Yeah.
Down at Center's Ford, I guess, they kind of don't want it there almost, it sounds like possibly, and like.
So it is actually stored at McClellan Air Force Base. They have a big, um, I can't think of the name of it. It's like California Exhibit, something or other, which is a really neat museum. If you ever get a chance to go there, it's really cool. It's kind of like Indiana Jones where you walk in and as you walk down, the lights come on and you, it's, and it's just this massive museum of shelves that go twenty feet tall with all kinds of, you know, artifacts on them. And, um, so the, the tree is there. It was at Center's Ford. It was at Sutter's Ford. I think they didn't have a good place to display it. So I know, uh, we've actually talked about it in the Historical Society and we're thinking it would be when we get the livery stable done, it would be really nice to do a Kit Carson display and have it there and do. And so, um, the place in, uh, the, the museum in, um, McClellan is for museums to borrow things for display. So I think it's going to be pretty easy for us to get that, that blaze tree, you know? It should be back in Amador County. It's, it's ours. So...
Yeah. Kind of a cool deal, really.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, uh, people, you say how, how, how those, uh, people do it way back when, like on Explorer, they say it's simple. Um, if you're not going back, you're never lost.
That's true. That's true.
All right.
Okay.
Public comment? Got a thumbs up and oh?
Yeah. Yeah. I was talking to, I was talking to Richard Saturday night and he goes, I want to go. I go, okay. Buy your plane ticket. You can go. So, anyway.
Thank you so much. It was very interesting.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Three E is behavioral health request for approval to submit application for Home Key Plus funding with co-applicants. Resolution authorizing the joint application. Review memo.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. Melissa Scilio, Program Coordinator with Behavioral Health. Melissa Cranfield is out of the office today. I'm also joined by James Coles, Principal with Housing Tools, who will be providing today's presentation. We're really excited about this opportunity through Home Key Plus. This is an expansion of the existing Home Key program that utilizes the Proposition One Bond Funds, the second round of bond funds that we had mentioned several months back that are earmarked for permanent supportive housing projects. Now, in addition to the development of housing, permanent supportive housing projects, there's also a gap financing opportunity and that's what we are seeking. This will, in effect, as it sounds, fill the gap and get us to the finish line and to construction with the Dan Co No Place Like Home project.
Okay, so this is part of that?
Exactly.
The whole thing.
Exactly. This is actually what we could say the final part. Um, and will meet that final funding need, funding requirement. Um, and I think with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over, um, to James to provide more information and I'll be back up to answer your question.
All right.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, Crew and Supervisors.
Morning.
Good morning. Um, my name's James Coles. I'm the Principal with Housing Tools and we are a consultant to the Behavioral Health Department. And I prepared a brief presentation on this agenda item. So I'll pull up here the PowerPoint. So, uh, this is to authorize a Home Key Plus application to the state, um, for the development of Sutter Creek Permanent Supportive Housing Apartments. So the purpose of the resolution is to authorize submission of this application, um, by Amador County Behavioral Health Department and Dan Co, uh, who is the housing developer. And this is to request fifteen million in Home Key Plus funds for the development of Sutter Creek Permanent Supportive Housing Apartments. If secured, this will be the final piece of financing needed for the project to begin construction. Uh, just a brief overview of the Home Key Plus program. This is a competitive state grant to develop permanent supportive housing for unhoused people. Uh, it aims to sustain and expand housing opportunities for persons with mental health and/or substance use disorder challenges who are experiencing homelessness or are at risk of homelessness. And the program provides capital and operations funding for PSH. Uh, local governments may coapply with affordable housing developers. Just a brief overview of permanent supportive housing. This is a housing type, um, that is funded through Home Key Plus. Uh, there are three main categories of benefits to this housing type. First affordability, second stability, and third recovery. So under affordability, rents are restricted to be affordable to households earning less than thirty percent of their median income. Under stability, the housing is permanent with no maximum length of stay. Rents are restricted to affordable levels for fifty-five years. Uh, and Home Key Plus provides subsidies to support operations. Uh, Amador County Behavioral Health will provide direct services to residents, uh, that are customized to their needs. Under recovery, this, uh, project will provide wraparound services onsite, including case management, mental health, and substance abuse counseling. And the goal of these services is to promote self-sufficiency.
James, sorry to interrupt you, but I, your slides aren't advancing.
Okay. Okay, it says screen sharing paused. We can try it again. See if I can restart it. Can you see that okay?
Yes, we can see the first slide.
Okay. Can you see the second slide?
There we go. Yes, purpose of the resolution.
Okay.
Very good.
So we, uh, yeah, we are on this slide on permanent supportive housing, um, and the affordability, stability, and recovery benefits. Um, under recovery, permanent supportive housing provides wraparound services onsite, including case management, mental health, and substance abuse counseling. And the goal of services is the promotion of self-sufficiency. Some of the broke programmatic benefits of permanent supportive housing, uh, first improved outcomes. Uh, formerly unhoused persons generally benefit more from supportive services when they are living in safe and stable housing. Behavioral health cost savings reduces county dependence on motel vouchers and residential care facilities to house their clients, uh, which require more expensive ongoing subsidies than placements in publicly subsidized affordable housing. And this leverages state funding sources to address local housing needs. Under public cost savings, PSH is less expensive over the long term than costs associated with managing homelessness through shelters, hospital, emergency rooms, public safety, and prisons. This is an overview of the project. Um, in total, there will be forty-six units in three new construction two-story structures. This will include eighteen studios, twenty-five one bedrooms, two two-bedrooms, and one three-bedroom, um, manager's unit. Ten of the units are affordable to households earning fifty percent of their median income or less. So those ten units are not Home Key, um, permanent supportive housing units. And then thirty-five Home Key Plus assisted permanent supportive housing units affordable to households earning thirty percent of their median income or less. Uh, case management and mental health services will be provided by County Behavioral Health. And there, in addition to that, there will be an onsite services coordinator available to all residents, uh, provided by Dan Co that will connect residents to community, um, services. Uh, this project has been in the works for quite some time, um, number of years. So in order to give a little bit of context for you, I wanted to go over the timeline, um, and some of the benchmarks. The first, the board adopted a county plan to address homelessness in June twenty-twenty, and this was a result of a extensive community engagement process, community meetings and workshops. Uh, one of the primary goals of that plan was the development of permanent supportive housing, um, that could be funded through the No Place Like Home, uh, program, um, which was kind of an earlier version of Home Key Plus. Uh, the board also authorized, uh, issuance of an RFQ for a developer that could, uh, develop permanent supportive housing with the NPLH funds in June twenty-twenty. Uh, the developer RFQ was issued in October twenty-twenty. And then Dan Co was selected as a developer to apply for the No Place Like Home funds in, um, January twenty-twenty-one. The board authorized submission of an application to NPLH in November twenty-twenty-one. Uh, county and Dan Co received a commitment of eight million, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars in NPLH funds in June twenty-twenty-two. And then the board authorized an MOU between county and Dan Co to develop, own, and operate the PSH project in October twenty-twenty-two. Uh, Dan Co secured planning approvals to build the projects from the city of, uh, Sutter Creek in, uh, November of twenty-twenty-three. And then just last month, uh, the board adopted a permanent local housing allocation plan that will capitalize two hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars in supportive services, uh, reserve for new permanent supportive housing. So this reserve will help to fund the services invited to the residents at Sutter Creek Apartments. So that concludes my presentation and, um, we'll turn it back to, uh, Melissa and the board.
Thank you so much, James. Any questions?
Since this is competitive, um, what's the likelihood of us getting this, this funding?
That's a great question. So we are confident that we'll be able to secure funding and that's based on a couple of things. One...
Is that second mic? Maybe turn that second mic off. Maybe if it's still on? I don't know. Uh, oh, sorry.
And I'll, I'll let James also answer this, but we did have a pre-application consult...
Pull it closer maybe? Pull the mic closer to you? There you go.
Testing. Um, we did have a pre-application consultation meeting with HCD and, um, they, you know, seemed confident about what we were putting forward. They also, um, one of the priority, uh, priority applications include those that have previously, um, not been awarded tax credits. So we've been through, right, several rounds of tax credit applications where we haven't received those awards. And then also, um, existing No Place Like Home, um, awardees who are coming down to, um, the drop dead construction date, um, are also priori- prioritized within that application process. And I'll go ahead and hand it back over to James who can also fill in, um, as to our likelihood of being awarded. But, um, we are, our application is prioritized based on what's outlined in the NOFA. And we did have a great, um, uh, pre-application meeting with HCD that gave us, gives us confidence that we'll, we'll be able to receive this award. James?
Yeah, there's a set aside within the Home Key Plus program for projects, uh, that are just like, uh, the Sutter Creek Apartments project in that they have received state funding commitments, um, and that this would be the last piece of funding needed to begin construction. So, um, in reviewing the NOFA with Dan Co, we feel confident in, um, ability of the project to secure this gap funding set aside within the program. And I feel like the project's well positioned for that, that piece of the funding.
So what's the total cost to build?
It's looking at around twenty-five million total.
Like half a million dollars an apartment? Sorry, just, that's a, a lot of money. Had to do the math on it and I'm just kind of shocked actually. Is there a reason why the cost is so high or is it...
Well, there, there are a lot of costs to go, that go into this type of project. Um, affordable rent restricted housing, um, will have some upfront costs that other types of housing will not. For example, for replacement reserves and operating reserves that are built into the, the budget upfront because there is less money, you know, down the line through operations with the restricted rents to cover those kinds of costs. So that, um, those reserves and upfront costs are built in. That tends to, um, bring the costs up, uh, a bit higher than a typical housing project. But, you know, uh, housing costs, you know, continue to be a, a challenge. Um, and so Dan Co continues to, to work through that with their contractors and, and bring, try to bring the cost down as best they can.
And do we know, so the cost to build's not twenty-three million, but what's, what's the reserves you mentioned that are built in? Is that a portion of that or how's that calculated?
Yeah, it's a portion. Um, so, um, typically the requirement for, yeah, is five hundred. Uh, so they'll, um, go at, um, let's see, it's a percentage of hard costs, um, that are projected. I don't have the figure in front of me right now, but, um, it ends up, um, I think it coming out to, um, about five thousand per unit for the forty-six units. And then there's also operating, uh, reserves capitalized, um, on that. And I'm, and I'm, that's gonna end up being about, uh, two thousand per unit. So it's a significant part of the...
Four hundred ninety thousand, not five hundred per unit. No, five hundred eighty-one thousand.
Three hundred ninety-five.
Uh, not my, I guess part of my question too is, I mean, I'm, you know, practicality, I've done a lot of maintenance on apartments that for a variety of people, uh, are these more durable slash safe? Because I mean, I know, like, um, I'm just saying, I've done a lot of maintenance and I'm amazed what I come across and I know how much it costs to repair things. And knowing the clientele that we're targeting, having issues, et cetera, I mean, is that gonna be enough maintenance to cover that? I mean, you can do five thousand dollar damage just by being, doing things. I'm just asking that question.
In addition to the capitalized reserves, the project is also required to, um, pay into, make annual deposits into the replacement reserve at, uh, five hundred dollars, uh, per unit, um, annually. So, um, that is also included. Um, the quality of construction needs to be, um, quite high and durable, given again the, um, rent restricted nature of the project. Um, so these projects typically, um, are constructed in a way that can limit those, you know, replacement and operating costs down, down the line, maintenance costs.
Okay. Um, I have a, I have a list of questions. I'll probably spare you most of them, but, um, so will there be, I assume there'll be maintenance and inspections? I mean, part of the, part of the objective is to hold people accountable and to get them actual help, not just help them, to actually help them, help them. So are, are there, will there be, there's an inspection process? And then how compulsory is it? And I might, I might come ask you a snowball question here, but then, uh, what, what is the eviction process too, all that together? I mean, we're trying to help people, not just throw money in a situation because that's, we do all the time. But how do we actually help people? I guess that's my larger question, but as a part of that, as part of process, how does that, how's that effectively work?
So in terms of the support we're providing, first of all, the population that'll be, um, housed will be stable. They will be going through coordinated entry. Um, they will be linked to our Department for Behavioral Health Support Services. Um, they will all have an individualized support plan. Um, we, as it sounds, wrap around and really have a holistic approach to providing the assistance they need to maintain housing, including counseling, substance abuse disorder services, employment services if applicable, and case management. Um, and all of that works to maintain their housing stability and their recovery long term.
And then I just have one last question, like I said, spare the rest of them. Uh, so I noticed on the very end of the document said that the occupancy needs to be achieved within ninety days of being completed. within 90 days of being completed. Is that something that, I guess, you pre-planned for? I would have to assume it's a pre-plan for it. And then where would those folks come from? I guess they'd come from the community, but would they be actually actively homeless? Or people that are already on boarded in apartments, hotels, et cetera? Is that kind of the thought? And then do you just have like a waiting list, or how's that? I'm just asking the details, sorry, but I'm curious.
No need to apologize. So they'll go through coordinated entry, so they have connected with our community, our COC, and are essentially eligible to be housed within the facility. So they could be currently living in an apartment. They could be currently coming from homelessness, but they will be folks that meet the criteria of having a mental health diagnosis and/or substance use disorder, have, are currently experiencing homelessness, at risk of homelessness, who qualify.
Okay. Okay, very good. And then, I guess, maybe a thought of that is, so is there like a preference list? I mean, I guess, you know, the old bill that they will come kind of thing. I mean, this comes from, I'll just say, I had a, I know another politician in a larger jurisdiction, just the north of us, or east of us, west of us. And they basically said they sent a lot of money, what they found out, the more they spent, the more they attracted. So I'm kind of, I'm more concerned about handling our homeless people that are actually our residents initially, and how is there a process there to that? I don't want to build stuff, and then people hear and they come. That's what usually happens in that population. My wife's in the R nurse deal with them daily downtown, so I'm just, I'm not insensitive or unsympathetic. I just want to make sure we're actually helping people as opposed to just spending a ton of money, putting that burden on us, the relative citizens. And then how do we, I want to make sure that we're effectively helping people. I guess that's my heart and matter.
This project is for Amador County residents. And then in terms of determining eligibility, I, I can email you in terms of, I know through coordinated entry, there are different, like, vulnerability indexes that are used to determine, to prioritize spots. So let me find out, because in part, I'm 10 months in my position.
You're fine, I am.
And we are not yet working directly with coordinated entry, and I'm not working directly in that capacity. So let me find out and get those fine details for you. But that's a, that's a great question. There are a couple of different, there's a VSPODAT that's used, and then there's another index that other counties utilize. And so let me learn more and get back to you.
Thank you, I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
All right. Any public comment? Seeing none, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Good luck, you guys might be getting hungry. I have a lot of questions.
All right.
All good. I'll move to approve the resolution.
I'll second it.
All right, we had a motion by Supervisor Brown and a second by Supervisor Epperson. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
GSA, letter from the board to State Assembly Member Heather Hadwick and State Senator Marie Alvarado, requesting legislation to amend informal public project threshold from 10,000 to 35,000. Oh, Glenn?
Yes. Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Morning. So just a little background. The existing law is that with any public works project valued at $6,500 or more, the county has to go through a formal bidding process. And, and that includes getting plans and specs, 10-day notice, minimum, two publications, successive publications in the paper. It's a pretty onerous process. And public works is basically any type of construction in a public facility. And it includes repairs, painting, and it also includes the labor and materials. So it basically captures everything. We have to go through this onerous, formal bidding process. And the Public Contract Code allows smaller counties, 500,000 or less, to adopt an informal bidding process. And the informal bidding process required, if we adopted one, would require us to have a register of, of local contractors with the intention that we would notice the local contractors of the informal bid opportunities. There would be no plans and specs required, just 24-hour notice with one publication. So it's a really streamlined process for the informal bidding. Now, the problem is, and the reason why the county hasn't adopted it, and I believe several counties have not adopted this, is that there, the thresholds are, there's this really narrow window between $6,500 and $10,000 for informal bidding. And the county doesn't really have, maybe comes across a job like that once every other year. So there's no point in us adopting this informal bidding process. So this letter is the board requesting our state reps to, to increase that from 10,000 to 35,000, just to adjust for inflation, because this was over 40 years ago when this law was put in place. So that window would be 6,500 to 35,000, and that would be a tremendous benefit to local contractors and also to, to the county, streamlining the process. Yeah, I think it makes, makes a lot of sense to me.
I think we said contractors get on that list. I think that's a bigger issue. I've seen in the past is where people just, they don't know how to get on the list, they're kind of frustrated, because they keep going to the referred list, but how do they actually get to that list? I guess that would be a, something for, you know, public information, but it'd be, it's important to get that out there so people aren't feeling like there'd be inside, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. And I don't have the specifics on that, but we're, we're moving forward with putting a, a list like that together right now regardless.
Okay, very good.
So, yeah.
And I would think, too, there's probably a list of licensed contractors from the state you could probably get and just, you know, there's probably a way to get them all some information.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Well, Glenn, there, it says here 10,000 to 35. Is that just our rules?
The, the rule...
The building goes to 6,500.
So right now, anything above 6,500 requires formal bidding, and we could adopt an informal process that would only capture projects between 6,500 and 10,000.
Okay.
Which is why we're not doing it. We need to increase that, that window.
Okay, I get it.
You know, one question I'd have, could you maybe raise the threshold a little higher?
Yes.
Would that be helpful?
Sure, we could ask for 40,000.
400.
400?
No, I was thinking maybe 50,000.
50,000?
I mean, what, like, whatever.
It doesn't take long to get to 50,000.
No, no.
I mean, thinking over like the last, well, if you've been, since you've been your, been your new chair, like, what have you seen, like, what's the average cost of a project? I mean, that would probably be something more pertinent, I think.
Every little repair, whether it's an HVAC repair, it exceeds that 6,500.
I'm sure, real quick, yeah.
Yeah, really quick. And, and I, I don't think I've seen anything that's right in that window of 6,500 to 10,000.
Yeah, I got some kind of asking is, kind of, what's the sweet spot right now? What projects have you seen? How much were they? And then is this threshold adequate?
The, I think the 6,500 to 50,000 would capture numerous projects.
And then, normally, I guess, I would just say, just think it's obvious, but it would be within the budget of that department. That's how that would function.
Yeah.
You cannot exceed the budget that you already assigned, and then...
All, all the, or other rules would, would apply.
Very good, yeah, that's my concern, I would say it's within budget, yeah.
Yeah, so, so basically, as purchasing agent, I, I'm looking at it in terms of ensuring best value for the county, making sure they have some informal bids or whatever it may be. But then there are the California regulations that we need to comply with.
Got it.
And that's where things get burdensome.
Thank you.
And you know, sometimes, like, I looked at Job a while back, and the City of Woodside, they had like 42 trees removed. There's like 201 pages for the RFP.
Mm-hmm.
I thought, forget it.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Glenn? Any public? Seeing none, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the chair to sign letters to the state representatives on behalf of the board request to increase the formal bidding threshold up to 50,000.
I'll second that.
All right, we had a...
Down that way in a second. Seconds down that way, I think.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah.
We had a motion by Supervisor Epperson and a second by Supervisor Cornell.
Fine.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thanks for doing this.
Sure thing.
Yeah.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay.
How's the new job going along?
Love it.
Good.
Fighting for the locals.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Maybe clarification, Mr. Chairman, and if it comes in lower, that's, that's fine.
Take what we can get.
Yeah, we'll take it.
Yeah, whenever you get it better.
Yeah, better than 10.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, review and possible approval of February 11th Board of Supervisors meeting minutes. I heard there were some serious issues.
Yeah, there was one correction, I think I already addressed that. It was just, there was one, I think I actually gave my page away, but it was, I seconded a motion, and it was also marked as absent. So I was there and made the, actually, seconded the motion. That was the only correction that I think there was addressed. I think it was already...
Yeah, that, and I think there was one where it said that, I'm on APAL, it said to make no allocation, I think should be...
Oh, yeah, should be the $15,000.
Yeah, should make the allocation.
Yeah, 215, yeah.
In the minutes, it said, it said no allocation, where I think we voted to do the allocation.
Yeah.
Did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Couple of, couple of little minor changes.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the amendments with those, that change and some minor changes.
Second? All right, we had a motion by Supervisor Onetto and a second by Supervisor Brown to approve the minutes with minor corrections. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.